Good evening, everyone, and I will start out right now by apologizing to the audience for the way the meeting is laid out this evening. It is not our intention to turn our back on all of you, but because we have a pretty substantial presentation this evening that will be used, which we'll be using the screen, we have to kind of set up this way. So again, I apologize for you seeing our backs. So with that being said, let's get the meeting started with our Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I also want to just kind of thank those who will be receiving recognition this evening of their flexibility and being able to come a little earlier tonight to our special meeting.
So I'd ask Lori Wireback to come up and have a seat at the table. So Lori Wireback has served the Farmington schools for 25 years. Farmington Continuing Education has flourished during her time, offering courses and opportunities tailored to meet the needs of our community here in Farmington. Lori's innovative leadership approach has shaped Farmington Continuing Education's expansion over many years, while others were struggling. Farmington's continuing education flourished under Lori's leadership. Lori has been a collaborative partner, an entrepreneur herself, and an expert in the areas of mandated and enrichment programming for all ages. The Farmington community and beyond have benefited from Lori's leadership in countless ways, and we thank her for her exemplary leadership and commitment to the Farmington Continuing Education for the past 25 years. I see that your family is here, and I want to thank them for allowing us to take so much of your time away from them to really serve this community, a community that you love. We're so grateful to you for your unwavering service and care, and we will miss you so much.
Lori, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Can I say a few words?
Please, I was going to invite you to have your remarks.
Farmington Board of Education, Central Office Administration. As I transition into retirement after 25 years as coordinator of Farmington Continuing Education, I want to express my deepest gratitude to each and every one of you for your unwavering support, guidance, and commitment to lifelong learning. Throughout my tenure, I've been fortunate to work alongside a dedicated team of educators, administrators, and community members who have shared my passion for providing accessible and enriching educational opportunities to all Farmington residents and our surrounding communities. Together, we have witnessed countless individuals achieve their goals, pursue their passions, and embark on new journeys of personal and professional growth. I am grateful for the trust and confidence you have placed in me to lead this invaluable program. Our vision and dedication to education have not only transformed lives, but have strengthened our community. As I embark on this new chapter in my life, I carry with me so many memories and lasting friendships, and the knowledge that our collective efforts have made a meaningful difference in so many lives. Thank you to my family who's with me tonight, the Board of Education, administrators, coworkers, instructors, and students for all the encouragement and support over the years. I have been truly honored to be a part of the Farmington Continuing Education team, and I look forward to witnessing the continued success and impact of the exceptional program in the years to come. Thank you.
Lori, sit down. Anybody like to say anything?
I would just...
Please.
Just want to wish you all the best of luck in retirement, Lori. This program here in Farmington, as well as other surrounding communities, would not be what it is today without your support over the past 25 years. I hope you're going to do something fun in retirement. So if not, come join the board.
Anyone else?
Lori, so you and I seem to bump into each other in different groups and just organizations or commissions, whatever, and it's just so clear to me that you see this, you really work hard to strengthen community ties and make those connections, and I think that's a testament to you as a leader, but also a result of that is a really strong continuing education program here and just people being able to work together to, as you say, change lives in the community. And so thank you for that, because it's very significant and obvious in the success of the program. Best of luck to you in your retirement.
Thank you so much.
I'll just finish up by saying, you know, I've been here for a while, right? And you've presented dozens of times at meetings, and you know, and, you know, a couple of years ago, we were at a meeting at Noah Wallace, and we're talking about custodial staff and how our custodial staff is great because we don't have to worry about them. Like, I don't lose any sleep over the work they do. You are that tenfold. And why that's so important is that we have to do this. Continuing Ed is an obligation. We are required. The town of Farmington, the taxpayers of the town of Farmington don't necessarily think about it. You know, we think about school in a traditional way, but this is an important part of what we do. We help people become citizens, right? And we help seniors connect with people that are kind of maybe might not otherwise have opportunities to be with other people. We help, you know, young people figure things out. And it's all done after the end of the school day, at night, right? When you're away from your family. And to do it with the love and the passion and the skill for a quarter century has made our board and this community way more enriched than it was when you started. So thank you for all your service to the community.
Thank you so much.
And you have a choice.
I don't think you do. I think it's a blanket or a blanket.
He keeps coming up with the hat. I'm going for the blanket.
Yes. All right. So our next honoree tonight is Dwayne Witter, and I would love for him to come up. Dwayne has been a dedicated health, physical education, and wellness teacher in Farmington. He recently retired last year from the role and continued to serve in the role of FHS Boys Basketball Coach this year. For the past 25 years, Coach Witter worked tirelessly to partner with his scholar athletes to achieve excellence in every aspect of being a scholar athlete. In Farmington, it's very important that we put those two words together, because both on and off the court is equally as important. In 2019, the FHS Boys Basketball Team achieved the prestigious honor of achieving a state championship, which was just such a personal and collective honor and an amazing accomplishment for Farmington. Coach Witter has made a profound and lasting contribution to the Farmington schools in so many ways, mentoring and coaching new coaches and scholar athletes throughout his career as an exemplar for excellence in coaching. He also challenged all of us to believe in one another and oneself each and every day, and his legacy lives within each one of us. On behalf of the entire school district, I extend deepest gratitude to Dwayne, Julie, and their children, Trey and Ryan, for being part of the fabric of this town and this school district, making it better every single day. I am thrilled that tonight we're honoring two children who are part of Dylan's Wings for Change, because I think you live that every day. You are spreading empathy and care for others, and that is a role model for all of our students, but also for the adults in the organization as well. Dwayne, you've just done such a wonderful job, and we thank you.
Thank you, Beth. I'm going to follow J.J.'s lead, but I do want to say thank you. You know, I have a lot of people to thank. Couple media outlets reached out to me when I decided to step away from coaching basketball, and they wrote articles and put them online. And each one of the articles, there was three different outlets that reached out to me. And each time, I talked about my wife a lot. I thanked her, and none of the three people that wrote about my stepping away from basketball for Farmington mentioned my wife. So I'm going to use this public role to thank my wife for everything she's done for me. And the only other thing I want to say is, I'm going to be okay. A lot of people reached out to me. They were concerned, they were concerned with my wellness. They were concerned that I was not going to be coaching, and what was I going to do with all my free time? I'm going to figure it out. I'm going to be okay.
I'm going to take executive privilege here. Well, I mean, you're going to get, you're going to hear a lot of, you know, well-deserved praise, right? And absolutely well-deserved for the years and all the student athletes that you've touched in terms of, you know, the kids that played for you. But I think it's really important that you also know that you impacted the kids that didn't play for you, or the kids that tried to play. You impacted them positively. You made them feel part of something. You made them feel part of a whole, and it's okay to be part of a whole. And that, watching that, in, to me, was just, that's real coaching. That's real leadership. That's real mentorship. It's not just the wins and the losses and the Xs and the Os. It's reaching those student athletes to not just focus on the game itself, but the how you conduct yourself, what's important, what are priorities? And I'll just say personally, thank you. Thank you. Thank you on behalf of all those kids who, you know, who also reached, and you should know that.
I appreciate your kind words, and that's all I ever, when I interviewed for the coaching job, I was a teacher in town for a few years and before I became coach. And I remember the interview, and I remember promising the principal at the time and the athletic director that I was going to do my best to bring the community together. And I think we did that on several occasions, and it was awesome.
Thank you.
So thank you for the kind words.
You're welcome. All right, thanks. Okay.
So Coach Witter doesn't have to make a choice, because Julie's getting the blanket. He'll get the hat or the opposite, but...
Kathy, do you knit these at night?
Okay. Our last honoree tonight is Sally Shaves, and this is her home, West District. Sally, 23-year teacher here in Farmington, received the Connecticut Science Teacher Association's Excellence in Science Teaching Elementary School Award for 2024. This prestigious award recognizes teachers for excellence in science education. We, really, they encourage teachers to support inquiry in science, and Sally could not have been a better choice for this award. In 2019, 2020, before the pandemic, but just so timely, Sally introduced Farmington to the Forest Kindergarten at West District School, which has spread throughout our district. By doing so, she created an avenue for students to practice habits of stewardship and service to develop a sense of responsibility for the care and protection of our earth. She leverages both play and learning experiences in the forest to support students' mental, social, and emotional health and well-being, and it was absolutely, you know, something that was so critical during COVID. Sally is not only an innovative and superb educator, she also generously shares her impressive expertise in the area of early childhood education, outdoor learning, and science inquiry here at West District, but throughout our school district and beyond. She is a student-centered teacher in all aspects of her work, and she truly celebrates the unique gifts and talents of each child in her classroom. Sally will be retiring at the end of this school year, and we are so proud to celebrate Sally and her stellar career within the Farmington Public Schools through this award that is so well-deserved. So Sally, can you come on up? So nice that we're doing this at West District. We should have done it out in the forest classroom.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Superintendent Greeter and the Board of Education for providing such wonderful opportunities for educators in this district to continue our own learning. It's hard to believe that 35 years has passed. It's gone quickly, the last 23 here at West District School. It was a, I married my husband, and our boys, all three of our boys, are products of the Farmington school system, so both my husband and I have a lot to be grateful and thankful for. You did such a good job that one of my children actually turned as a teacher here. But I have places to compare to, and Farmington, above all, provides their educators with some of the best professional development I've ever seen, and that is why you have such excellent teachers here. You allow us to continue to grow. You give us the opportunity to try things that are a little wonky at first, but you provide us with materials, the research, and then individuals to help us along the way. So I also have to thank Kim Nguyen, especially because Kim knows, Kim was my inspiration for leaving my Lash job and coming to Farmington. She was my son Trevor's sixth-grade teacher, and every time I met and talked with her, I was so impressed by everything she said that I was like, I have to come to this place. So I wanted just to publicly thank Kim for all of her support and her inspiration over the years, too. So thank you all very much.
Board members? Well, I'll just say, what's really cool about this is it reinforces, your award reinforces the value and importance of teaching science to kindergarten, at the kindergarten level, right? You know, we, I think people who don't pay attention to what you do don't necessarily put a lot of like thought into like, oh, is there a depth to that? Is there, what's, you know, what's, and obviously, that's not the case, right? And your work is an absolute example of that, and to have this award, you know, earn this award on your way out, what a great way, what a crowning achievement on an amazing career. So we wish you the best of luck in retirement.
Thank you so very much.
And we know that a Chavis will continue to be teaching in Farmington for the foreseeable future, let's hope. Motion to adjourn.
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Okay. Call the meeting to order at 7:10. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consideration a superintendent's report, item five, oh, sorry, check that, sorry, guys. Approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the April 22, 2024 BOE regular meeting?
Motion second.
Any revisions, comments, proposed changes? All right, hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Okay. Next, item 5B, Elementary Ad-Hoc Committee Presentation by, SLAM?
Yeah, SLAM.
Technically still SLAM?
Yeah, yes, still.
Okay.
It's great to have Pat Gallagher here. Pat Gallagher had been one of our lead consultants and partners throughout this process and continues to be a valuable partner in this work. I'm excited because for those of you who engaged in the process throughout, Pat was always on the screen, so this is really cool that I'm sitting here.
I met him for the first time face to face.
And Pat and I have spent so many times talking and meeting, but it's good to have you here in person, Pat. Just before Pat starts, and Pat's really going to take us through a comprehensive overview, as many of you have seen, and we shared this, we shared this presentation with the community over a week ago as well, just to give folks a chance to start to engage and re-engage in the process. All of those wonderful video recordings that Pat participated in and presented are also available online and have been available online. So again, we encourage our community to engage in the process. Many of you will remember that this committee was charged in the, in the winter of 2023, and we really were talking about this work heading into the winter in 2022, transitioning into 2023. And just on the screen there, you can see the, the meetings and the themes of the meetings that we had with our committee over this year and a half or so span. But really, our charge, as you know, was to examine enrollment projections and then also assess the capacity and usage within schools. And, you know, again, couldn't have done this without our partners, Pat Gallagher and Mike Zubba, who I believe are now in such high demand that they're actually exclusively working on enrollment and demography for school districts and have done a really good job for us here. And so I'm excited to have Pat present. I also just wanted to take a moment, I see some of our committee members in the audience today, but we were very fortunate to have representation from the board, from the town manager's office, from the Farmington Public Schools, and from our, and from our community. We had representatives from all of our elementary schools in town, as well as representatives in the community at large. And just want to extend my thanks to them for giving their time, effort, and energy to take part, to offer throughout the process, feedback from their respective perspectives, and to help us be ready to present to the board for consideration, a variety of options tonight. And so, again, want to thank our, our community members and our family members for being a part of this process, and welcome the board's questions, comments, and feedback tonight as we engage. And with that, I'm going to just transition slideshows. Pat's slideshow had so much memory that it couldn't fit in the other slideshow, so I'm going to hand this over. I have it pulled up here, Pat. And I'm going to turn the mouse over to Pat.
Good evening, everybody. Pat Gallagher with MP Planning Group, formerly with SLAM. Great introduction, Scott. Having worked for about a decade with various school districts across the state, including similar processes, I commend you guys for really running a, an inclusive process, engaging the community every step along the way through the ad hoc committee. I felt that that really added, you know, a good check along the way to make sure that, you know, every step of the process, we were hearing from folks who represent different constituencies within the community. So this evening, I really want to just give a summary of what we've been busy working on over the last 12 months. Scott alluded to the process where, you know, we have been really taking this step by step. The first two phases of our work were what I like to call kind of our fact-finding phase, our enrollment projections. Our first phase was really focused on understanding, you know, where is the district headed over the next 10 years, and how is that going to impact individual schools? So we prepared by-school projections. And then we compared that to our building capacities in Phase Two. So we worked collaboratively with the FPS administrative team, who then worked with building leadership to determine the capacities of each of the elementary schools. Once we compared enrollment projections to the capacity, that helped define some of the challenges that we're trying to solve as part of this process, ultimately leading into Phase Three, where we started to look at some potential scenarios that could address those options we addressed in Phase One and Phase Two. And again, working with the ad hoc committee was, I think, really instrumental to the process, making sure that we heard from the community every step along the way. And thank you for the members who are here tonight or who are listening at home for your input throughout the process. So the first step in our, in our study was to understand community demographics and enrollment projections. And we like to take a step back and look beyond the school district to the town as a whole. How is the town of Farmington changing? And if we look at population growth, you are actually one of the fastest-growing communities in the state between the 2010 and 2020 census. You were the 10th fastest-growing municipality in Connecticut, adding over 1,300 new residents, so 5% growth. And that's not growth that other communities in the state have felt, and that's been reflected in your school system. Births is another demographic indicator that we closely track, and you guys have been very, very stable over the last 15 years or so. But we do see some, some little peaks and valleys, and what we saw in 2020 and 2021 was an uptick in births. And why that matters is that births tend to correlate with the size of your kindergarten class five or six years later. When we have more births, we tend to see larger kindergarten classes. When we have fewer births, that results in some smaller kindergarten classes. So that's something we track very closely. Housing is another community trend that we like to track closely. Obviously, your student body was either born in Farmington, or they moved to Farmington during their school career. And so we look at a lot of housing data to understand, you know, what direction is Farmington going? Home sales are a big driver in a community that has a lot of single-family homes like Farmington. And what we saw is that in 2021 especially, we saw a big uptick in home sales, which brought a flood of new families into the community. And anecdotally, working in a lot of communities across Connecticut, we hear the same story of its empty nesters who had kids who graduated through the school system. They're selling their homes to a young family who's bringing new students into the community. And so that, that peak in home sales in 2021 certainly led to some increased migration into your schools. We have seen sales decrease a little bit over the last few years, and that's largely driven by, you know, national trends around interest rates and housing prices, but still a significant number of sales annually. And then new housing is also another thing we track very, very closely. Over the last decade or so, the community has been fairly stable at about 35 new housing units permitted every year, but we know that there is a significant number of units that are planned that are not necessarily captured in the historic permit data. We had the town planner on our ad hoc committee, which was great. She was able to share the latest information on planned and approved housing that may not be impacting Farmington Public Schools today, but will be impacting Farmington Public Schools over the next 10 years. And so we were able to track those developments, locate those, so we can understand whether they're impacting a particularly, a particular elementary school or not, and also understand their relative size and unit types. What we tend to find is that developments that have a lot of studio and one-bedroom apartments don't produce a lot of school-aged children, but developments that have more two- or three-bedroom apartments tend to have a greater impact. So looking at the data that the town provided, we see just under 1,200 units that are either under construction or approved and not yet built, so a significant number of housing units. Out of those, about 60% are located in the East Farms Attendant Zone, and we know that that's been a school that has seen some enrollment pressures, and that, again, I think spoke to our process and one of the challenges we're trying to solve. Certainly, there's enrollment pressures today, but how can we accommodate these new housing units as students begin to populate them? We did note that there's a significant number of smaller units. Out of these, almost 1,200 units, about 62% are studio and one-bedroom apartments. So these units, again, are unlikely to have a significant number of students. And we did incorporate these students from future housing developments into our projections. So looking at our enrollment trends, I think the one word that stuck out to me for Farmington is stability. Working in a lot of your peer districts, we tend to, we tended to see enrollment start to decrease in the, you know, mid to late 2000s, and while a lot of districts are starting to rebound from that, Farmington has been remarkably stable at between 1,400 and 1,500 students pretty consistently over the next decade. But what we have noticed is that over the last three school years, there has been a slight uptick, and as of October, your elementary enrollment is at 1,530 students, so slightly above your historic long-term average. But I think most... But I think most importantly is when we look at that change at the individual school level, we start to see some disparities, where certain elementary schools are growing, notably East Farms and West District. And other schools have seen enrollment decline, such as Noah Wallace or stay very stable, Union. And this is what we see when we're working with districts that have neighborhood-based attendance zones like Farmington. Your neighborhoods are never going to all grow and change at the same rate, but rather they reflect the unique conditions and housing in each area. And so periodically looking at your attendance zones in light of this change is certainly a good process. One of the other things we wanted to explore is what neighborhoods are particularly driving the enrollment increase that we're seeing, especially in East Farms and West District. And what we were surprised by is that it was largely neighborhoods that didn't see a whole lot of new housing, where most of the growth was happening. And so we surmise that the growth that you've seen in East Farms and in West District is largely due to turnover of existing housing, whether that be single-family homes or rentals. So we prepared district-wide elementary school projections that capture all of that background demographic and housing data that we look at. And what we're anticipating is a slight decrease next year. Part of that is due to the smaller kindergarten class that we're expecting due to the change in the entry-age requirements. But we also have a large fourth-grade class this year that will be moving up to West Woods. That should provide a little bit of relief at the elementary level. But we're expecting enrollment to grow, especially in years six through 10 of the projections, as all of that new housing is built and occupied by students. And we're showing the enrollment growing to just under 1,600 students over the last few years of the projections. And again, much of that growth is attributed to new housing as opposed to existing. Does that mean we go back? Thank you. I think it's lagging a little bit. There we go. So we also prepared by-school projections. This was really important as we're starting to look at the capacity and utilization study. And what this shows is that East Farms is projected to see the greatest growth. And again, that's largely attributed to those 700 new housing units that are under construction or approved in the East Farm Attendance Zone, so growing to about 533 students in 2031, '32. So about 30 students more than you have today. We're expecting a slight decrease at Union, which has been a very, very stable school over the next five years, before seeing some growth over the last five years of the projections. And then we're seeing modest growth at West District, reaching 382 students. And then Noah Wallace, again, being a very stable school, averaging between 325 and 345 students annually over the next decade, with some ebbs and flows in any given year. So just to summarize our enrollment trends, again, you're a fast-growing community. Interestingly, while your population grew, your enrollment stayed very stable. And so your population growth as a whole, I think, largely offset the declining enrollment that we saw in many of your peer communities. And we are anticipating some growth to continue as those new housing units are coming online. And again, with East Farms being the location where most of those housing units are located, we're anticipating the greatest growth for that school. So Phase Two of our work was focused on developing capacities for each of the elementary schools. So how many students can fit within each building while delivering the education that you strive to achieve? And comparing that to our projected enrollment to understand which schools may be feeling enrollment pressures and which schools may have some available space. So this was a collaborative process with the administrative team and building principals. And it's important to note that capacity, in our mind and in our experience, should never reflect the maximum number of students you can fit in a building. But rather, it should be an ideal number that reflects an ideal class size and your educational program that you're trying to deliver. So for our approach, we multiplied what we're calling our available classrooms. So that's available classrooms that meet all of those educational needs that you offer. And then multiply that by our ideal loading level, which we're using 21 students per classroom, which is an average across all of your grades, knowing that in the lower grades, you may see some lower class sizes. In, you know, grades three and four, it may be a little bit higher. But averaging about 21 students per classroom. But this is not the maximum in any of your buildings, but rather kind of an ideal operating capacity. But in the ideal world, we wouldn't want any building to be over our capacity because we want to make sure that we're maintaining reasonable class sizes across the board and being able to deliver that educational program across all the buildings. So working with the administrative team, we developed what we're calling our educational program requirements. So these are all of the services that an elementary school in Farmington provides, and making sure that each of the building's capacities has enough space to accommodate all of, you know, not just grade-level instruction, but all of the support services and specials that you offer. And on top of that, we also have district-wide programs that we have to accommodate in certain buildings. And pardon me while it loads, but we have a number of district-wide special programs that are... Here we go. They're not necessarily required to be in every elementary school, but they need to be somewhere. And this includes the SLC program. We also have pre-K located in several of your buildings. And these are programs that collectively need 12 spaces. Some of these are full-size classrooms. Some of them may be a little bit smaller, depending on the number of students that are being serviced by each. But we wanted to make sure that the capacity reserves space for all of these district-wide programs as well. So going through this exercise, we developed what we're calling our planning capacity or our ideal capacity for each of your elementary schools. For some of these, for some schools like East Farms, this actually reduces the number of classrooms that are in use. So today, for example, East Farms has 24 grade-level instructional classrooms that are in use. But we know that all of those various support services are not necessarily in the most appropriate spaces. And so we've deducted four classrooms from East Farms to provide adequate space for all of those different educational services so that they're on par with the other facilities. So the capacity at East Farms reflects that deduction, 420 K4 students. Noah Wallace, Union, and West District are roughly equal in size at between 350 and 400 students each. And again, our capacity accounts for the various special programs, most notably the ones that are at Noah Wallace, which has five of those spaces, and Union with three, and just one at West District. One of the important findings here is that when we look at system-wide capacity at across all of your elementary schools, our planning capacity is 1,554 seats. And what's notable here is that that aligns with, very similar to our projected enrollment over that 10-year period. What that means is that, system-wide, we don't have a lot of room to accommodate students unless we are basically loading every elementary school at 100% of the planning capacity, which is difficult to do, knowing that your neighborhoods are always going to grow and change at different rates. So to us, that was one of the challenges that we identified that we wanted to try to address as part of Phase Three of our work. So this shows our projected utilization. So this compares the capacity with the projected enrollment for each school. And again, I think this speaks to the challenges that we're trying to address as part of our process, where we have East Farms exceeding 100% of the planning capacity, actually averaging almost 120% utilization over the next five years. And the remaining buildings ranging from about 87% at Union to about 93% at West District, which are comfortable levels. You know, high 80s, low 90s are really a comfortable operating level. But again, at a system-wide level, we're seeing an average utilization of about 98% over the first five years. So even if we were to spread all your elementary students evenly across all four of your schools, we would have four schools at about 98% utilization. So that was kind of one of the things that drove Phase Three. How do we add capacity to the elementary system in a way that's going to allow us to have some flexibility? Should, you know, should a school see an enrollment bubble? Should we want to add a program? Having some flexibility was certainly one of the goals of the committee. So moving on to our planning scenarios, this was a process that was, again, iterative, working with the ad hoc committee. One of the keys to our process, having done this for many other districts, is to establish what we like to call our guiding criteria. You know, us as your consultants, we really need to have an understanding of what you're trying to accomplish as part of any project that we're brought on board for. And the guiding criteria really become our, you know, our rationale and what we're trying to accomplish as your technicians. And so working with the committee, we came up with a list of seven criteria, ranging from educational criteria, so striving for parity in utilization and class sizes across all your buildings, providing adequate indoor and outdoor spaces. Sustainability was a big one, and it's a little bit different of a definition than might be used for other things. But for us, it was making sure whatever we look at is going to be long-lasting. We're not going to have to do this again in the next 10-year period. Demographic balancing, so making sure that we are maintaining socioeconomic and demographic balance between your buildings in accordance with state laws. We always want to be sensitive to community disruption. Obviously, that's something that's never easy for families. So trying to find a solution that works while minimizing disruption is always something that we strive for. And then fiscal responsibility, also a big guide, you know, knowing that whatever we do, we have to consider both operational cost impacts as well as any one-time costs, capital costs that may be needed. So these are all things that we were looking at and trying to develop metrics for as we went through our process. So we ended up looking at four different approaches that really... The main goal here was to try to better balance elementary enrollment across your four schools and trying to alleviate that pressure at East Farms. So our first two scenarios that we looked at were simply, let's just try to change the lines without necessarily making some bigger changes to district-wide programs or adding capacity to any of the buildings. So we looked at a traditional redistricting approach, which is just trying to maintain contiguous zones and, as well as satellite zones for some of those future housing developments, which is more of a kind of a checkerboard approach. And then our next two approaches added elementary capacity. And they took kind of different routes of achieving that. So the first approach, Scenario Three, we're creating additional capacity at the elementary schools by shifting pre-K out of the elementary schools into West Woods. That opens up classrooms that then can be used to accommodate the K4 student population. And redistricting would obviously be part of that conversation as well. And then Scenario Four is, what if we were to just right-size the building at East Farms, knowing that right now the building's too small to accommodate the population? What if we just simply add an addition and make it big enough to accommodate the students? So that was something we wanted to explore as well. And I'll just briefly summarize each of the scenarios. And then I'll spend a little more detail on Scenario Three, which was the one the ad hoc committee is recommending to the full board for consideration. But wanted to walk you through the process that we went through with the committee. There's always pros and cons to every approach that you implement. So there's never going to be one that's going to achieve everything perfectly. But this, I think, will hopefully help communicate some of the, you know, the things that we were balancing as a committee. It's always important to compare everything to status quo because, you know, oftentimes people forget that doing nothing doesn't necessarily mean no impact. Doing nothing sometimes ends up having a greater impact than, you know, doing something. So when we look at all of our scenarios, we want to compare that to what would happen if we did nothing. Obviously, doing nothing means we're not disrupting any students. We're not moving any programs. But those enrollment pressures at East Farms are going to persist over the next decade and increase as that new housing development comes online. And that's had, you know, impacts to those students with programs having to be moved to carts and having other support services in, you know, various spaces that may not have been designed for that over the course of the year. They're doing a great job of making it work, but it certainly is not necessarily on par with the spaces that your other facilities have for all of those support programs. So Scenario One was, again, where we looked at traditional redistricting or more of a, trying to maintain that neighborhood-based approach, which, again, is in line with your historic attendance zone policy. So some of the pros to this is, again, we're maintaining that district or that neighborhood-based approach. We're not changing district-wide programs, so no shifts in pre-K or special programs. We don't require any construction costs or changes to operational costs. And this comes with some cons. We have the greatest redistricting impacts of any of the scenarios that we looked at. This actually impacts several schools, not just East Farms. But we ended up having to shift students between each of your elementary buildings so that each elementary school was either sending or receiving students from another. And I think most importantly is this does not add any capacity to the elementary school system. And so we'll be operating system-wide at close to 100% over the next 10 years. So from a sustainability standpoint, that certainly was a concern of us as well as the committee. Scenario Two is what we're calling satellite zones. So again, more of a checkerboard map. If you were to look at the map in the presentation we presented to the committee. And the rationale behind this was, well, let's see if we can move fewer existing students by just reassigning the future housing developments as they come online. And, you know, some of the pros to this is that we're able to redistrict fewer existing students compared to Scenario One. And like Scenario One, we don't have to build any space or have any capital costs or shift any district-wide programs around. One of the biggest cons to this is that, you know, if you were to look at the map 10 years from now, you're going to look at it and say, this doesn't make any sense. You know, we're really deviating from that neighborhood-based model. And by having that kind of checkerboard-looking map, we're also increasing transportation costs because we have to bus students from the satellite zones to the school that they're attending. So we do anticipate, you know, slightly greater transportation costs. And like Scenario One, this doesn't add any capacity to the elementary schools. And so we will be operating close to that 100% utilization over the next five years. So Scenario Three, I'd say is a creative way of adding space to the elementary school system. Credit to the administrative team for really suggesting that we look at this one in a little more detail. You know, we know you're a community that just went through a big referendum at the high school. And the appetite for folks to want to spend millions and millions of dollars to create more space at the elementary school system is certainly something that, you know, may be a challenge to pass on referendums. So this was a very creative solution that, you know, tries to open up space at the elementaries by shifting pre-K into some available classrooms at West Woods. So here, we're just focusing on the four pre-K classrooms at Noah Wallace. Being right next to East Farms, it's ideal to open up space at that school. That helps us alleviate the enrollment pressures there. So some of the pros to this scenario is we add capacity. So we're adding four classrooms, or 84 seats, for your K4 students. And this provides some flexibility to be responsive to, you know, unforeseen growth and enrollment bubble, or if you want to add programs to any of your buildings over the next decade. Another benefit to this is that we are only shifting students from East Farms to Noah Wallace. All the other scenarios moved students not just to one building. So by moving all the students together, we have the largest peer group that we can possibly have. So about 15 students in each grade would shift from East Farms to West Woods here. So maximizing the chance that a student who is impacted is going to be moving with, you know, peers that they know. That certainly helps make the transition easier. We are also shifting some future housing from East Farms into Union. There is a proposed housing development or approved housing development, excuse me, at the far western end of the East Farms Attendance Zone, right near the Farmington Canal Trail. And we have shifted that to Union proactively to, again, help kind of spread that future housing across several districts as opposed to keeping it all in East Farms. And then by leveraging the space at West Woods, we're minimizing the capital costs that the district's going to have to spend in order to create that extra space at the elementary schools. And I'll get into what some of those details are when I go into this scenario in a little more detail. Some of the cons to this is we're shifting pre-K classrooms to West Woods. So obviously, shifting programs is going to have some impact to families. We have slightly higher redistricting impacts than the satellite zone approach, but still less than Scenario One, where we did a traditional redistricting approach. And we do require some investment in order to fit out the spaces at West Woods. So working with SLAM's architectural and cost estimating team, they're estimating between 145,000 to 175,000, kind of rough order of magnitude costs to fit out four classrooms at West Woods. And finally, Scenario Four is what we're calling right-sizing the East Farms building. So what if we just add room to East Farms in order to accommodate those almost 530... So, what if we just add room to East Farms in order to accommodate those almost 530 or over 530 students that we're projecting over the next 10 years? So, we are modeling this off of a five-classroom addition, so one classroom in each grade, growing the capacity to about 525 seats. So, like scenario three, we add capacity system-wide, so we do have some greater flexibility. We also would have no redistricting impacts because we're just adding the space where it's needed as opposed to shifting students around. But the big con here is the cost. So, our rough order of magnitude cost here is $4.8 to $5.85 million for a five-classroom addition at East Farms. And that would also result in operational cost increases because you're, you know, operating a larger building there as well. And, you know, another, I think, major con is that, again, with the high school project and the cost of that, being dependent on a referendum to solve some of the space needs was certainly a risk that the committee noted and one of the major concerns that folks had with scenario four. And then, another major concern is implementation timeline. You know, scenarios one, two, and three can all be implemented relatively quickly, but this, you know, a major construction project, you're looking at a three-to-four-year timeline if you go through the school construction grant application process. And so, we're not addressing those issues at East Farms until three or four years down the road. So, certainly another con. And then, lastly, this was brought up, I believe, by some of the ad hoc committee members, is that you'd have one school that would be, you know, larger than all your other ones. So, 530-student school, and then your remaining schools would be, you know, 300 to 375 students. So, when you get to a school that's, you know, 500 or more students, then you're starting to also look at potentially needing some additional staff just to cover that large student population. And so, we put together a scorecard. I've already gone through the pros and cons, so I won't go through this in detail, but this just translated our guiding criteria into considerations for each of these scenarios and really helped the committee weigh the different scenarios against one another. And ultimately, the committee landed on scenario three, really best meeting the needs and the issues we addressed in phase one and phase two of the work, best meeting the intent of their charge. And I'd like to spend a little bit more time going through scenario three in some greater So, as I noted before, this shifts the four pre-K classrooms from Noah Wallace into West Woods. We're targeting the 25, 26 school year. Any major changes to attendance zones, it's always good to have lead time both for families as well as any lead time for, you know, mobilization if you're moving students or teachers. In this case, we need, we anticipate some fit-out needs at West Woods, so this gives the district a little bit of time to plan and incorporate that into their capital plan and staffing plan. One thing to note is that we are only shifting the Noah Wallace pre-K here. The other pre-K classroom at Union is remaining in place, so it's not required that the Union pre-K classroom move to West Woods in order for this option to be feasible. And then, that four-classroom opens at Noah Wallace allows us to then shift those East Farms students into that space. And as I noted, we are also shifting one future housing development into Union to better spread that load across the buildings. So, we went through an exercise with the administrative team, the pre-K director, to understand what is needed for the pre-K classrooms should they move to West Woods. Obviously, we need four classrooms to relocate the Noah Wallace students, but it was preferred that these classrooms be clustered together, so not dispersed throughout the building. And that way, we have some separation from the upper elementary grades and also some collaboration with staff. Students would also need an age-appropriate restrooms, an age-appropriate playground, and ideally, a separate entrance for parent pickup and drop-off so that they're not necessarily having to use the same one as the older students in grades five and six. So, we went through a field, a fieldwork exercise where administrators, the SLAM architectural team, myself, and the West Woods building leadership took a walking tour of the building, looking for, you know, what are some areas of the building that best meet that pre-K program need? We were focusing on the lower level of the building to provide direct egress for the pre-K students, that we could provide that outdoor play space. So, we're focused here on the floor plan here showing the lower level of the building. And we had discussed with our kind of working group in our field visit that day, three potential options. So, the first was repurposing the science lab classrooms in the fifth-grade wing of the building, which would have two classrooms on the lower level and two on the upper level, and then the prep room could then be repurposed as a toilet room shared between the two pre-K classrooms on each floor. Currently, these spaces are used, I think, for small-group instruction largely, so it wouldn't displace any permanent staff, I believe. But obviously, one of the cons there is that we are spreading pre-K across two floors, and we won't necessarily have the dedicated entrance or egress for the pre-K play area. Option two was taking a look at an area in the center of the building that currently houses various special education services. That would require a much more intensive reconfiguration of that space in order to make four pre-K classrooms, so we'd have to take down walls as well as shift where the special education services are in the building. It actually is quite ideal for special education in that building, being central in between the fifth and sixth-grade wings of the building. Ultimately, we determined that was not the most ideal. And option three ended up being the one that the committee and also talking with building leadership there are recommending as the most appropriate area for four pre-K classrooms. So, these are four classrooms, again, located in the lower level in the fifth-grade wing. There are currently, you know, folks that are assigned to those spaces who could then shift to the science labs that are on the lower and the upper floor in the pre-K wing. And that allows us to create a cluster of pre-K classrooms with a dedicated bathroom that could be fit out with pre-K fixtures, allowing us to have a level of separation as well as a dedicated entrance for an outdoor play area. So, this area was determined to be the most ideal for pre-K in the building. And by, oops, go back. From a cost standpoint, too, by leveraging existing classrooms, scenario three ended up being cost-effective, similar to scenario one where we're reusing the science labs, where we do have some fit-out costs, but we're not having to move, you know, walls like we would in option two. And this graphic, I think, was just a site map showing the location, it's not showing up, so I can't... Here we go. So, this also takes a look at where those four classrooms are relative to parent pickup and drop-off. So, we noted, being on the lower level, having direct access to the outdoors, there's two potential areas for pre-K play area, including a courtyard area right outside the pre-K classrooms and a grassy area just across the fire-access lane. And then, again, talking through the options with building leadership and the administrative team, we really have a lot of different choices. So, during peak hours, we want to have separation from the fifth and sixth-grade students, and so we have a parking lot up here near the gym that could be used for parent pickup and drop-off for pre-K students, and then they move down to their lower-level classrooms or walk down there with staff. This would allow, you know, complete separation from the parent loop for fifth and sixth grade. And then, during off-peak hours, because there is a lot of off-peak pickup and drop-off for pre-K, they could then use the main entrance, just like the other students. And then, an alternative is if parents did want to park and walk, they could walk to a dedicated pre-K drop-off here on the lower level with, you know, a key fob or a staff person that's allowed to, you know, oversee students coming in and out of the building. So, certainly, options here from an implementation standpoint. So, again, we wanted to make sure that we understood what some of the capital needs would be for this option. So, some of the fit-out needs we're anticipating are, you know, things like carpeting, small sinks for smaller students, cabinetry, a dedicated toilet room and changing area for the SLC pre-K classroom to meet the student needs. And then, the remaining three classrooms would share a retrofitted toilet room that's off that hallway, an age-appropriate playground, and then camera and buzzers at the two pre-K entrances, so the lower-level one as well as the gym entrance. And again, we ran this by SLAM's cost estimating team, and they provided a range of $145,000 to $175,000 in kind of capital fit-out needs for all of these improvements. So, for all of the scenarios, we went through a mapping exercise. We were provided with your district's student database for, I believe, at least six years, and that allowed us to physically map your student populations and run enrollment projections for the different scenarios that we looked at. So, this map here shows the elementary attendance zones under scenario three. I apologize, it's a little hard to make out the colors with the lighting, but in purple is East Farms, in red is Noah Wallace, green, West District, and blue being Union. And I believe the next map will show it a little bit easier, the areas that have shifted. So, I'll start from west to east. So, we are shifting a small area in the far western part of East Farms to Union. This is that future development, I believe it's called midpoint, right next to the Farmington Canal Trail. So, no current students live in this area, but we are kind of proactively reassigning future students from that housing development. And then, we moved two areas from East Farms to Noah Wallace. We have students in the Farmington Ave corridor, primarily on the north side, several town home and apartment developments with about 50 students in grades K through three, knowing that fourth graders wouldn't be impacted because they'll be moving up to West Woods. And then, a second area located on the mountain between East Farms and Noah Wallace, where we're shifting another 11 students based on existing numbers. It would change slightly depending on the 2025, 26 implementation, but a rough order of magnitude, looking at about 60 K-3 students would shift between East Farms and Noah Wallace, so about 15 students per grade. And again, by only shifting from East Farms to Noah Wallace, we're maintaining, you know, that largest peer group that we can. We're not, you know, sending a couple of East Farms students to Union, a couple of East Farms students to West District. All of those East Farms students are going to be able to stay together at Noah Wallace, which is certainly one of the pros to this option. We prepared enrollment projections for this scenario and all the scenarios, looking at utilization. So, again, we opened up some space at Noah Wallace, allowing us to increase our planning capacity to over 460 seats. And then, again, reassigning those East Farms students helps get East Farms to just under 100% of that ideal number over the next five years, which is really our target. And then, that grows slightly to just over 100%, but just slightly. So, again, we have headroom built into this, this is not the maximum capacity. So, 100% essentially would mean you may have one or two classes that have some 22 as opposed to 21 loading levels. And one of the challenges was, besides those two areas moved, there wasn't really an area where we could move a small enough number of students into Noah Wallace without dividing a neighborhood. That was one of the things we tried to avoid. So, certainly, one of the things we looked at is, well, can we get East Farms below 100%? Technically, yes, but what that would end up doing is kind of moving students, you know, splitting a development like a Devonwood that's large, and you'd have to kind of draw the line right in the middle. And so, that's something we wanted to avoid and felt that, you know, being just over 100% wasn't a concern enough to consider, you know, making some changes to this one. But importantly, we also have some space system-wide. So, over the first five years of the projections, we're averaging, you know, 92% or so. And what this does is it gives us some flexibility should, you know, you need an extra classroom for your special education programs, or if you have an enrollment bubble, which, you know, always tends to happen in, you know, neighborhood-based schools, one school may just see, you know, a big kindergarten class show up that you don't really expect. So, the flexibility certainly is one of the benefits here. And then, implementation considerations. So, we put together just kind of two potential notes for discussion with the board. We understand that the district has an existing exception policy that essentially lets students, you know, apply to attend another school so long as they provide transportation and there's available space. I could let the superintendent speak a little bit more about that if it comes up in the Q and A, but there's certainly, you know, some limitations to that with, you know, staffing and class sizes. That would be a consideration. And on the flip side is, well, is there, are there some options, knowing that, you know, this would not be implemented until 2025, 26, to provide some relief to East Farms next year? And so, we've also laid out a potential early implementation option, which would allow families in the redistricted areas, whether they're new registrations or existing families, to proactively move a year early to prevent moving. And this may be especially attractive to new families to the district who move in. They know that they may be impacted in 2025, 26. They may say, you know what, I'd rather just enroll in Noah Wallace now, and that, you know, helps prevent a transition for them, but it also helps provide some relief at East Farms a little more immediately. And so, this could potentially be something that you could wish to incentivize, whether that's through providing transportation or just, you know, noting that this is an option for parents and families. So, just two things I wanted to lay out for your further discussion, either tonight or at your next meeting. Thanks for the accommodating me. We had a lot of work that went into the last 12 months, so hopefully, I covered it all. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Scott, do you want to add anything to Pat's presentation before we...
I just wanted to, again, extend my thanks to Pat, and I think, I think his presentation does a really good job of showing the comprehensive approach to this work. Unfortunately, we're in a position where there, as Pat alluded to, there aren't any easy decisions, but I do think the work of the committee and the questions that we were able to ask in that space helped push our consultants and push our group into thinking about what we think, like I said, there's no great choices, but what we think is the most, the optimal choice, both looking at the projections and also looking at what makes sense from a Farmington standpoint, right around neighborhood school, geographic proximity, and some of the other things we've heard from our, you know, our members of the committee who really represent the families of those neighborhood schools.
I'll just add that that committee was set up, in our materials, the, and in the presentation, one of the sites, all the members who served on the committee were identified, and everybody really did a fantastic job. The community members, whether they come from the, whether they were school-based or whatever their role, everybody participated. It was a very collegial and collaborative effort. Pat and his team did a phenomenal job of presenting at every meeting, they were always prepared. It was a really, a really amazing process to be a part of, and this presentation tonight really does a great job of distilling over a year's worth of work in response, and this work was done in response to a problem the board identified a year and a half, really two years ago, as what's the, we have challenges, we have challenges at East Farms, and with the development that's coming into our community, how are we going to respond to those challenges and maintain fidelity to the principles that Scott just kind of identified? So, with that being said, I'm happy to open it up to any questions the board may have. Angela.
Thank you, Pat. I thought this was a great presentation, and Scott, too, very comprehensive. Appreciate the work of all of the ad hoc committee. I am an East Farms mom with two kids, and at some point, I'll have three kids at East Farms, so very near and dear to me, the overcapacity issue, and I think, you know, this will be a welcomed, you know, a welcomed coming to the district. That being said, I think, Scott, you touched upon it. Can you give us a little bit more insight into, as a parent, I'm very sympathetic to, like, the current second graders at this school, who were also part of the work being done at East Farms two years ago, and they spent a year at Noah Wallace in kindergarten, and now they're back at East Farms, and I know there's been some concerns for that. So, as I was thinking through it, you know, if we sent them to Noah Wallace next year, that group could actually get three years in an elementary school, right? Because technically, they were at Noah Wallace for kindergarten, and then they could do third and fourth grade, so they would actually have their majority of school at Noah Wallace. Are we going to be personally reaching out to, I know you, I thought the communication was excellent in terms of what streets would be, you know, affected and all of that, but would we personally be reaching out to some of these families to try to walk them through some of those options, or even new families to the district, to your point? Like, I don't know if you're a new family, do you know this is going on? Are you just going to automatically enroll in East Farms and then in a year have to go to Noah Wallace? So, I think the community is probably interested in just those being... So I think the community is probably interested in just those, those being, I'm not part of the redistrict myself, but I'm, know families that are as being part of the East Farms community, so can you just speak to how we'll be addressing the concerns of those families that will be affected by it?
So I think I'd start with, in the work of the committee that was actually called out and discussion as well, the, you know, the empathy and thought for students who were part of the Noah Wallace Kindergarten Academy, and, you know, they're now rising, soon-to-be rising third graders, and by the time, you know, this implementation timeline would go into effect, they would be, you know, scheduled to move back to Noah Wallace in their final year as an East Farms elementary school student. So I think that is something that will require more deliberation and thought. You know, it really depends on what direction the board, the board gives at this point, and then, so to answer your question, yes, if the board eventually opts in this direction, then we're going to have to think really carefully around, you know, communication or likely be personal, I would think, personal communication or personal US mail communication to all families who would be impacted, I would think would be a logical step in that process, if and when the board arrives at a decision and directs, you know, directs, you know, my office and our team to commence in that work. And certainly, as board policy sets forward, as long as there are space and capacity, you know, there is, you know, if every family that was eligible to move wanted to move to Noah Wallace next year, that likely would not be possible, given that we still have the pre-K space in use. It's just not, unfortunately, something that we've both budgeted for and are prepared to make a move, but I do think, in looking at our early enrollment numbers, I think there's some flexibility there, and there could be, for sure. So I don't know that I gave you a real hard and fast answer there, but I do think there would be consideration, both if this becomes a decision, then we have to enact an even more rigorous communication methodology to reach the families who are directly impacted. In this case, we've targeted it community-wide, and, you know, we did our very best, I think, to try to call at least what the committee had proposed as the best option there, but I think there is some flexibility moving into next year. But again, if we received, I think if Dr. Huber received 60 requests for enrollment, we would not be able to accommodate that much.
Understood. And it would be the recommendation of the committee, though, that in two years, this accounts for everyone that should be redistrict moving over, and that would create the necessary space at East Farms. Because I want to be cognizant of that as well, in that, you know, you mentioned it, and I don't know if everyone noticed, but like, the music is on a cart at East Farms. So those kids are missing out on getting up for that portion of their special, and they're stretching, and they're all on a cart, and the music teacher's phenomenal, and everyone loves her, but she's on a cart. So, you know, you want to be considerate of that as well. So it's just finding that balance, though, because I am, being a mom in East Farms, I'm super sympathetic to everyone coming with questions as well. So just want to be cognizant of that as a board.
I just want to jump in real quick. Kathy, we're not voting on this tonight, obviously. There will be a recommended motion that you'll come forward with at the next meeting. And will that motion include implementation language, or just simply adopting the recommendation of the ad hoc committee? In other words, what would be, how would the motion read? I mean, if you're going to talk to Tom and figure out how that's supposed to go, I'm cool with that. Just kind of give me a sense of what that means.
I think, you know, we want to hear from all of you tonight.
Right.
To get a sense of where you are with this recommendation. If there were things you wanted us to explore from this moment to the next meeting, we would do that. It gives us a little time to look into those possibilities of, you know, and it was mentioned in one of the slides, like, implementing a little early for some families and making that an option, that means that we would have to accelerate potentially some movement with preschool. You know, we, East Farms is not the only school that has music on the cart. We have to do that sometimes. Unfortunately, it's not ideal, but we have to do that because, being a former principal, enrollment ebbs and flows, programs ebb and flow, and we have to make those difficult choices. But I would agree with you, it's not ideal. We want our music teachers to have a space, we want our art teachers to have a space, and, you know, that is something that is a priority for us, and we would achieve, you know, with that particular option that was recommended by the ad hoc committee. But it's really about, are there any questions here? If there were, we'd bring that information back, and that would really inform the motion.
Got it.
If there were some caveats. It was mentioned that we have a current policy right now in place that, for a variety of reasons. You might live on East Farms neighborhood, but grandparents live in West District. It just makes sense for the family that the child walk home to the grandparents' house after. The parents provide transportation. If we have room, we can approve that change from the neighborhood school to an alternate elementary school, but every year, that policy means you have to reapply. It's not forever. So it's one of those things that we're really clear with families. Every year, if the second grader moved to third grade and there was room, but over the course of the year, more children moved in, and then third to fourth, or, you know, on and on, it doesn't work. We then have to say no to the families, and they have to go back to their neighborhood school. So it's, although it's a family-friendly policy, it also can be very challenging for families year to year.
Okay, so I just want to, so we're clear on that. If there's anything that any of my colleagues want to include as part of this implementation, tonight's the night to raise it. Because we're not, I want to have a clear motion or clear sense that goes out to the community before we vote, so they understand what it is, what's going to happen, so they have opportunity to come and comment on that. I don't want to kind of do an ad hoc kind of last minute in the June meeting, come up with a couple of, oh, let's put it in, you know, I'd like to have a clear sense of what it is that we want to do tonight. Now, I've been to all the meetings, I don't have anything I feel I very want to add. I feel like that presentation was really succinct with respect to the question of implementation and waivers. We've gotten emails about fourth graders, particularly rising fourth graders. We have, you know, that was discussed, that was discussed, and we do have a policy that addresses that issue, and that is something that can be deployed through the district and through the building principals. In other words, there's an opportunity for a family that's looking for a waiver to apply for the waiver, but it's not a guarantee based on the existing policy. So I just want to offer that out there in terms of my thoughts on that, and then kind of leave it, because I'm not sure, like, what you guys might be thinking, and I kind of want to prime the pump a little bit with some of the conversation. Sylvie?
Yeah, I do have, first, I just want to say, it's been a few years, and this was a very good presentation, thoughtful, considerate. Changes are always hard, but it's so necessary for the town of Farmington and for our students. You never want large class sizes, and I know that, being a pre-K teacher for a minute, you just don't want it. But I do, I might have missed it if you could just better explain, but I might have missed it, I'm not sure, so just correct me. So if these were taken, the, you know, if we're taking option three as a consideration, the pre-K classes go to West Woods, right? Is there still additional spaces, let's say, you know, the fifth graders coming in, it comes in a very large, because now we're opening up more space, obviously, right, in the elementaries? So do we still have a little bit of extra space for those fifth graders coming in, or sixth graders with the pre-K four? Because, you know, considering we have to spend a little bit of money for the pre-K four, as a taxpayer in Farmington, I just want to make sure that this is long-term, not short-term, because the last thing we want to do is be spending a bunch of money in and saying, oh, now we need the space for the fifth graders, let's get them out and change again. So I just want you to, did I miss, I might have missed it.
No, that's a great question. I actually didn't cover it, but that is something we discussed at the ad hoc committee level as well. As part of our walkthrough with the West Woods building leadership, that was one of the questions that we asked for them, knowing that you have a very big fourth grade class this year, who is going to be moving up, and they'll be in sixth grade when this is implemented. And they did say that they had additional kind of flex space on top of the four classrooms to accommodate larger classes. So yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, that was definitely something we talked about.
Thank you for the presentation. Very, very comprehensive, and thank you for all the ad hoc committee members who participated, gave their time. The planned developments that might not have been approved yet, they're either under appeal or just, you know, in TPZ, did you factor those numbers in? Did you use them?
I believe the ones that were under appeal, we did include them, yes.
Okay.
Should they move forward.
So are there any that are just floating out there that may not have gone to TPZ yet, or are they?
So anything that had started the land use process, we were aware of, and that was in our chart as of the fall.
Okay.
Of course, there's always going to be new developments that pop up and stuff, but everything as of the fall was included, yes.
Yeah. Kathy, I guess the one thing in terms of exceptions, if, you know, I'm sensitive to that current second grade at East Farms, and, you know, wanting to finish out their year, their fourth grade year at East Farms, can we get an idea of what the number of fourth graders, that year, the 25-26 year, that would actually be impacted?
That's a good question.
And then I guess my final question on that policy and exceptions would be, what if, you know, not just that current second grade class, but what if there are 60 families that apply because they, you know, it's going to happen, I just want to do it now? How would that be handled?
The way the policy reads, there has to be capacity for an approval to occur. So there would have to be room for that to happen. We would still have the preschool there, as Scott said, and we do, in order to move that preschool anywhere, we need some operating or capital funds. So that's why we need next year's budget process for the 25-26 year. So that's, we can't implement it that quickly, given our budget timeline and just really giving this time to study. But we would certainly, like, consider if, to the point that we couldn't add anymore because there might not be any more classrooms. Even if we said, okay, and normally, I don't add a teacher by moving students. By policy, I can't do that. But if that was something that was doable in some way, you know, we would consider that. I think the question isn't, there's an unknown answer, how many would take advantage of an early move? We just don't know. Maybe that would be a survey, you know, to those individual families, would you consider this? And then we'd have an idea, grade by grade, what that would look like, and if the board said to us, you know, as part of the approval, you know, we would provide transportation, because that would be hard on families, and they want to take advantage, because typically that policy is you cannot get transportation to the other school. That would have a budgetary impact, for sure, which we'd have to think about. So there's a lot of considerations, because we just don't know how many would take advantage of that early option. You know, it's an unknown, we'd have to do some work there.
Could we just implement it, and then with instructions on to do something like that, survey the community and get a sense of what that would look like, and then come back and then decide as a board how we want to respond to the result of that survey?
Yeah.
So that we let everybody know, this is what we're doing, but in the interim, we're not, we're just have to sort it out, and maybe we have a special meeting in the summer to figure that out.
Something like that, yes.
One last, oh, I have one, you can.
No, it's like all building, yeah, you go.
So I think you've answered it, but I guess my question is how you decided on the neighborhood off of Farmington Avenue, which I think is like Greenbrier, Lakeview, because it does have a little bit more of a satellite feel from the actual Noah Wallace neighborhood. I mean, I live in the Noah Wallace neighborhood, so I know from where I live, I would have to either go over the bridge and up Route Four, or east across Garden and down Farmington Avenue. So it's not, it's kind of like out there.
Yeah, and I guess you could say the same for them going to East Farms today, right? They're kind of moved from a lot of the other neighborhoods within the community, but great question. So I can kind of talk through our process as your technical, your technical experts. Geographic proximity is always one of the main things we're looking at, so distance, as well as just the relative size of the areas that we're moving. And that particular neighborhood kind of met those two criteria. It was enough students, it was a large enough population that by moving them, we were, you know, addressing the enrollment imbalance issues at East Farms, and they were actually closer, as the crow flies, to Noah Wallace than they are to East Farms. So we felt that that made sense. We did look at other neighborhoods in East Farms that are on kind of the western part of the attendant zone, but they were either too large, you know, a Devonwood has a lot of students, and we didn't want to, we didn't want to split that in two, or just from a geographic standpoint, they were further away.
Do you have another question? I'm sorry, Nadine, I realized your hand was up. You would go first. I'm sorry, Nadine, I didn't see your hand up.
My quick question was, and kind of relative to what Andrea was saying, some of those streets that were selected, do they actually have physically students there now, or is it what's projected based on the future state of building?
So we basically grabbed all of the streets that were in the area that changed. So some of those streets may have students today, some of them may not. So we wanted to make sure that we were capturing, you know, if a family were to move into a certain street that doesn't have a, you know, an FPS student today, that gets updated with your registration office. So yes, it includes both.
So if no one ever moves into that area, then we?
Still reassigned, but it may not have an impact.
Very good. And then what is the split between the pre-K number of students and then the K through four that are moving? Do we know that?
Don't off the top of my head.
It's just the four classrooms?
Four classrooms that Noah Wallace, yes.
Average of 21?
Okay.
No.
Less than that.
No.
Yeah.
In a pre-K, you're probably, you're probably looking at 60, 60 or so pre-K students between the four classes.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. So playground space, we have a history of needing playground space and adapting to that at West Woods. So is that incorporated into the cost estimate to?
Yes, so a dedicated pre-K playground was incorporated into the cost estimate, yes.
Okay, great. So, and then also with it being a long-term solution, I heard that was a priority, and I think I might have missed it, but I think there was a slide that got to it with, if this was implemented, how long would we expect the solution to kind of hold?
Yeah, so we can forecast, you know, we do 10-year enrollment projections. We always have the most confidence in our first five years because we're dealing with a lot more knowns. Year six through 10, you know, we're reasonably certain about kind of the overall direction, but the, you lose some accuracy because you're dealing a lot more with assumptions. So we're dealing with fewer students who are physically in Farmington seats right now. We always like to look at the five-year as kind of our main metric, but we always have to make sure at six through 10, it works as well.
And then it was after five years, I think, that you started to hit that over 100%?
Slightly over 100 at East Farms, yep.
Okay. All right. And then Kathy, I think you answered this, but the budget process and that timeline is obviously something of consideration. So, but the way it's set up now, if this were to happen for 25-26, that allows it to go through the budget process and then construction or renovation, really, the adaptations.
You know, we have done that type of renovation before in any school that has a preschool because they require different bathrooms and things like that, so they're appropriate for three and four-year-olds. So we're very, you know, like, comfortable with that type of renovation. It's not substantial, and Excel would pay for the playground, so it would be a little less than the projection in our budget, because whenever we add a preschool anywhere in the district, that's, it has to have a playscape, and Excel pays for it from their, you know, the reserve they have.
Okay. Good to know.
And then I would just add, you know, considering the timeline, this, even if this had been able to be presented for this summer, you know, West Woods is the central location for summer programming this summer with the new high school coming onboard and the movement. The high school's really off limits, you know, right after graduation for the entire summer. So West Woods is taking on more program than it has before, and as I'll give you in the budget impact update after, but, you know, as you know, the budget passed, and so next summer, right now, it's scheduled for West Woods to be offline anyways for a roofing project that is being bonded for. So I think, you know, when you think about logistics of not having activity in the building anyway to do this work, that would play a role as well. that would play a role as well. It's really timing up nicely in terms of how the budget process is lining up as well.
Erica?
Yeah, and thank you, and great job on the presentation and all the great work that was done. And you've answered a few of my questions too, but just for clarification, for the space at West Woods that will be now, will be maybe used for the preschool, how is that being reallocated to the other? You know, those are current classrooms, right, right now?
Yeah, so, West Woods was well done when it comes to planning and having flexibility. So, there is swing space because back 20 years ago, there was a priority on STEM and science. So, there are extra classrooms there that are science classrooms. But as science programming has evolved and we have an outdoor classroom and much of the inquiry can be done in regular classrooms, those are extra spaces. That's really the only reason we have this option is that West Woods had additional space other than what's, would we consider today, which was not in place back then, allowable square footage. It was over, given the projections for enrollment, the allowable square footage. So, we have swing space in that school because of those science classrooms and so.
Losing any, the student body was not going to lose anything in that sense of that it can't be.
No programming would be impacted by placing the preschool there. And I'll just give you, for those who might not know, we do have a preschool at IAR. So, it's not something that we haven't done in the past. And, you know, it was, to do that at IAR, there's some really unique benefits of having middle school children with a preschool because they read to the students during the school day. And I would imagine West Woods would do amazing things with having older students go to the preschool or the preschoolers go to the other classrooms. So, there's that added programmatic benefit, I guess, to having that situation. So, it's not something new for us to have a preschool with, in a place where there are older children.
Yeah, and I have, my oldest actually benefited from going to IAR's preschool. I absolutely was such a positive experience and, yeah, it was a very good, positive experience. The only other question I have, and I think this goes to some of maybe what Angela was saying and what you all were talking about earlier, is in regards to the, this exception, this approval for, request for an exception to be made. I think, you know, part of the implementation guidelines would be maybe around, so if you were to get significant number of requests for this, consider, you know, what is some transparency around how those decisions are being made? You know, and maybe providing that information earlier on for the parents, you know, this group of parents that would be impacted. The survey idea is a great idea because then you can then be able to, you know, again, I think people want to know, parents want to know how was, who was, why was certain people picked versus others? You know, so just a little bit more of that transparency and the criteria selection, if that is to be made. And then, and as a parent who's been in Farmington for a while, I did not realize that those, that parents that currently have that exception would have to apply year after year. I don't, you know, you just said that.
Well, in this case, the implementation year would be 25-26. So, that would be, it would only be the one year. If they were to do it early in 24-25, they would have, you know, they would make the request, but then in 25-26, that's their neighborhood school, so.
Yeah, so maybe a little bit more communication around that and education around that? Because I don't know if parents, I mean, I don't really know if parents know that, you know, would know that.
Yeah.
That's it, thank you.
James?
Well, first, thanks, Pat, to you and your team and the entire committee. I mean, this is quite a balancing act to come up with a solution, this comprehensive, great presentation. I think it really minimizes the impact to the, to all the school districts, which was, you know, ideal. One thing I wanted to talk about was just the future planning, you know, kind of piggybacking off of what Beth said with regards to future development. I know we talked 1,171 units currently either under appeal, under construction, whatever it may be. It becomes a math equation, right, with those. Talking about future development even beyond that. So, what's not in the pipeline? I know we're kind of running out of space in Farmington, could you just speak to that and like what you heard from the town planner on that?
Yeah, I think, point well taken in that, you know, there's always going to be development that we don't know of right now that, you know, over the course of the 10-year period may come online, may have an impact. That's one of our, my challenges as a demographer is that I'm kind of limited to only factoring in developments that are known. And that was the conversation I had with the town planner is, you know, what is known or reasonably likely to move forward? So, ones that have, you know, been approved, if they're under appeal, we'll just assume they're going to, you know, move forward just in case. But I think it speaks to the need to have some capacity system-wide and some flexibility at each school, knowing that, you know, we're never going to know where those future developments are going to pop up. We know that, you know, the 1,000 or 1,200 units, they're concentrated on the east side of town, but I believe over the course of the process, we did see some pop up in, you know, West District that we didn't know of. So, having that flexibility built in system-wide will hopefully be able to, you know, you guys will be able to respond to any housing and have some room to accommodate it. Ideally, you know, you wouldn't have to look at something like satellite zones, but it's always an option for new housing if, you know, 10 years from now, you're facing a similar challenge at one of your buildings. But there's certainly options.
And also to clarify, so the planned capacity factors in 10 to 15% of headroom, right? So, that 420 for East Farms and after year five, I think it goes up over that 100%. That's that number that actually has that 10 to 15% already baked into it.
Yep, so the planning capacity is every classroom's loaded at 21 students, but we know that, you know, you can have classrooms that go higher than that. So, that's why we never plan for the max. So, if you go a little bit over the planning capacity, typically that doesn't have much of an operational impact.
Yeah, thanks. And then lastly, I think, you know, talking about what Erica was piggybacking off of Erica as well, it's just, this is communication, right? I mean, we've got to be sympathetic to the family that's impacts and be as flexible as we possibly can be within the confines of the, of the building, you know, requirements that we have. So, I mean, as long as we are even overly communicative. And I think the whole process has been very, very well done from that standpoint. So, I'm looking for that to continue.
Marty, I don't want to put you on the spot. I saw you looking at me a minute ago. If you don't have anything to say, you don't have to. I just, I didn't want to put you on the spot. I just didn't want to give you an opportunity.
It was a great job on the presentation. It just solidified everything I read previous to the meeting. And I like the idea of the survey.
Yep, I think it's a good idea, for sure. You've already gone, Angela gets to go, Angela gets to go, then you get to go.
No, I was just literally just going to say, kind of what just was touched upon by Erica, James, Bill, I really liked your suggestion on Andrea's too, surveying and seeing what we're dealing with, you know? Because then we'll know, do these families want to go early? Can we accommodate them at Noah Wallace, can we not? I just think over-communication, and I agree with Erica, I don't know if everyone's aware of the exemption policy. And I think making everyone aware, this is it and this is what we'll stick to. Because if we're doing it based on room, the projections for East Farms still to be at like 98%, so there's no guarantee there will be room to keep them there technically. So, I think just being transparent with all of that. But I think to your point, the survey probably will at least let us know what we're dealing with and then we can properly kind of do the.
I have, I have a thing I'm going to say, but I want to wait your turn. I want my turn.
And thank you all for letting me ask additional questions. I know, I know.
I'm going to ring the bell. That's the new tool, you're out of order, we'll get a bell ring.
So, you talk about having to maintain certain socioeconomic and racial balancing within the school district and there's state guidelines. And scenario three does still keep us within the state guidelines, but it also indicates that it's slightly worse. What does that translate to into numbers? Because I see the percentages, but I don't know what that translates to.
Sure, I can provide a breakdown. I don't have the numbers at my fingertips, but you were well in compliance. I think it was just comparing it to status quo where the difference between the highest and the lowest, you know, schools with students of color would be, you know, greater range than it is today, but still in compliance. But I can send those through Scott to get to all of you.
Thank you.
That would be actually really important data.
Yeah. You know, for those, we do have a state law and our neighboring district, West Hartford, has had to deal with this many times. But if you look at your population and you're 15% off, whether that's 15% where there are, you know, white students more than the district average and/or you have more when it comes to students of color, 15%, you're in impending racial imbalance. If you get to 25%, you are in imbalance and you must come up with a corrective plan. So, you never, you know, we've never had that. We're not, it's not perfect, but it's not an impending imbalance. But we look at that every single year, just so that you know, we get a report every year. We look at that every year because we do want to, you know, the spirit of that law and make sure that we're following it. We do monitor it to see if any school is getting to impending imbalance or imbalance itself. But you'd always have those early warning for impending. And I'd be coming to the board if we were in that situation.
Kath, that's included in that report we get in October from the state, right?
This is something that really is on the webs, you know, on the State Department of Education's website. And we get a link to it every year just to kind of check and see where we are. It's never been an issue for us, so it never has been brought to the board. But if it, I know in some districts, Greenwich, West Hartford, they have dealt with this for decades, trying to follow that law and having to put magnet schools in place and all kinds of other plans to try to balance, you know, racially balance their schools. I don't know if, did you?
I had looked because we did review it, but Pat's numbers were not broken down by school, they were just global. So, he has it in a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
That's fine, perfect. Anything else from anyone?
I do have one last question.
Sure.
Will the option three reduce or eliminate any of the classes being on cart in East Farms?
Yes, so the planning capacity at East Farms reduces the number of K4 rooms used for instruction from 24 to 20. So, you'd open up four spaces.
Thank you.
Yes.
One more question, Bill.
Sure.
Will you?
You're all coming to the end of your questions.
It's a big deal.
It is, of course it is.
Just again, because I always think of money.
Kidding.
Will we be applying, I know there was security grants out there for preschool programs or whatever they want to consider it for security, and then also pre-K expansion grants? I'm wondering if you're looking into that or is that something we could try to look into? I know it changes year to year, but.
We will certainly be open to any advantageous opportunities to receive state support or state funding that would become available. You know, certainly we'll rely on our consultants and our partners, but we'll also make some calls ourselves to see what's out there and available, for sure.
Thanks.
All right. Last call. All right, a couple of things. First, if you have questions that you didn't think of tonight, but you want to have answered before our next meeting, I would just ask that you forward them to me and I'll forward them to Kathy and the team, okay? And then we'll figure out how we'll respond, okay? Don't email anybody directly, please. Second, I think the thought, how I would like to proceed, it's not really a motion or anything like that, is to basically, at the next meeting, instruct Kathy to adopt the recommendations as presented this evening, but with further instruction on, for the district to come up with recommendations with respect to implementation, communication, things like that, including things like a survey. And then what that would contemplate would probably be a special meeting that we would have in July, depending on the results of that survey. So, in other words, if we get a survey that comes back and says there's 60 families that want to take advantage of it, well, then we're going to have to talk about how we want to do that. It will be a lottery, you know, if it's possible even, right? So, I think that's probably the best way to go. Because I don't know if, because we don't have enough data, I think, tonight to really like give a full instruction to the district on how we want this to go. I think really the goal tonight, and then again in our next meeting, is to convey to the district, this is something we need to do, we're going to do it, come back to us with some ideas on how to do it well, and then we'll kind of work on it collaboratively as a board and then come up with the final approach for implementation. How's that sound for everybody?
Sounds good.
Cool, all right. Okay, thanks Kathy, great, thanks Pat, great job, man, we'll see you in June. You're not done yet, buddy. Okay. Next item on the agenda, 5C, summer curriculum process projects. Kathy?
So, I know that the Curriculum Committee reviewed the summer curriculum process and projects. And Veronica Ruzek, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, will come up to answer any questions that you might have.
Good evening. Just every year, I bring this report to the board to show our ongoing iterative curriculum work. So, iterative was a word that's been used a lot today. But that's exactly what this is too. We're always working on it, improving, and we find summer a really great time for that. You know, it's sort of the pressures of having the day-to-day of the classroom aren't there? So, it's a really great time to reflect on what worked throughout the year and make those planning changes for the following year. The projects that you see here, can you go to the next slide? I don't want to read them to you because you can see them there. So, really, I just want to talk about a couple of just highlights. One of them just being the SEL programming is one of the areas that we work on in the summer. So, all the advisory and crew lessons that we talk about. And at elementary school, you know, there's always so many great programs that happen throughout the year. Many of those are planned in the summer. So, all the different kinds of things that they do, you know, sort of whole community-wide and, you know, all those kinds of activities are planned in the summer. I also wanted to say that the summer work will also include some work to align our K4, really K3 right now, program, reading program to the requirements of the reading programming of, that the state has said that we should align to, which they call the science of reading. So, that is in development. And then the reason I pulled up this slide is I just wanted to sort of give you a high-level overview of when we say we're working on the vision of the global citizen and deeper learning, you're always getting deeper learning updates. And so, I just wanted to point out that there's really two sort of halves of that. One is deeper learning pedagogy. In what ways are our teachers teaching sort of in everyday classrooms with this idea in mind that students are going deeper in the work that they're doing? So, generally, this describes our FTL in a very synopsis kind of way that we really want to have great teaching where students, the teachers will pique their interest in something. Students have a lot of time to explore and then ultimately altogether they consolidate the learning. So, that's the pedagogy piece. So, one of the proposed ideas for the summer would be an academy that we would call Instructional Practices Institute, Making Thinking Visible, where we would explore that with the teachers who sign up to come. And then deeper learning experiences. Again, we're talking about those a lot, but these are some of the sort of features of that. So, we really want to integrate any project that you see here, these kinds of ideas. So, real-life purpose, product has an impact. Many of you probably, again, with the deeper learning updates, you see some of those projects. You've seen, maybe around town, you've seen the Stamp Out Hunger. That was part of our second grade unit, making a difference in our community. So, those are the kinds of things that we're constantly trying to build into our curriculum. Certainly, we want students to demonstrate mastery on important skills and dispositions. And then the idea of many different perspectives being explored, that there's an inquiry component to anything that we're doing that is aligned to deeper learning. So, this is a really high-level, like simple way to explain in the summer what we're trying to do with our curriculum and any kind of teaching and learning institutes that we come together for in the summer. I also want to say that any of the projects that you see here, and again, I'm not going to read them all to you, but they're collaboratively developed. So, vertical teams are the ones who, you know, are constantly looking at the curriculum that they have. We have an entire list, every department has a list of when's the last time that curriculum has been updated? They use that. They also think about who, you know, which projects are sort of priority projects that summer that we really want to work on. And then ultimately, we make some decisions about what we have the capacity to do sort of in one summer worth of work. And generally, these institutes and the work, you know, they start off right when school closes. The very next day, teachers are right back with me, usually at the high school, but not this year, as you heard, because there will be sort of tape all around the high school. So, we hope to do it at IAR with a little glitch on one day when they're going to be cutting over the internet. So, we're kind of not sure what's going to happen on that day, but Matt Ross assures me that. me that they're working on that. But it's a, it's a, you know, a great opportunity to continue the learning into the summer, great time to, like I said, reflect and plan for the next year. So I'm not going to read the projects till you see them all there, but I'm just very, you know, this is, again, one of those great things about being a teacher in Farmington, it's totally iterative, we're always working to improve. We have big goals that are aligned to the FTL and the vision of the global citizen that are really our North Star, and everything sort of, you know, we're all rowing in the same direction towards that goal and constantly improving what we do. So that's the summer process, and I'm just excited to work in a district where many teachers do sign up for these experiences and continue to, you know, continue to improve on what we do here on a constant basis.
Thank you Veronica. Anybody have any questions? Angela?
I just have a global question. So obviously agree, we don't want any curriculum stagnant, you know, constantly evolving, and this, this is great. Besides just informative, so this is informative to me, what you're working on, has this already been like, is there a cost associated with this? Like, what is the action for us? Is this already baked into the budget, or is there something you're coming and asking us for? Is there anything more I need to know about this, or is this just an informative?
Yep, so this part of it, what we've selected to do is informative, but certainly at budget time, that's where the cost of what's programming, we already know at that point, this is a long process too, just developing what the projects are, and certainly some things shifted since, since then, but generally during the budget process, we sort of give a price of how much these kinds of things historically cost, and we kind of know already a sketch of what are some of the projects we might need to do. So that is a time when the, you know, where the, the money that's allocated for this was already sort of determined.
So this is all covered, or like, the budget we just approved, this is all?
Already, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Any other questions for Veronica? Veronica, we know this is where the sauce is made.
It is.
Or I should say the sausage is made.
Yes.
But we know this is really the, really the nuts and bolts of the work that you do to give us the school district that we have. I mean, really, this is, this is really the, the most critical stuff that we do. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and thanks to all the teachers who come and.
Right on.
Done this, and it's a year-long process, it's great.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be back for other reports.
I'm sure you will. Next, we have teacher program leadership appointments.
So Kim will provide an overview, again, part of the, did you say, the secret sauce, right? Teeming is part of our.
Absolutely.
Starvin, that's all I'm telling you right now.
This report dovetails nicely with Veronica's, you know, explanation of how we constantly revitalize and update and make our curriculum engaging for students. The teachers listed in this report all apply for and then serve in these leadership roles. I think it's really a testament to our vision for shared leadership, that we have approximately 100 teachers here who are part of sort of the think tank, district-wide continuous improvement efforts, who lead that work in their schools, on their teams, in their departments. They really make a difference, they work very hard, and this is just like a very nice opportunity to celebrate them and, and thank them for their leadership. And I, I do want to just reiterate, they all apply for these roles. These aren't just legacy, you, year after year, you're in the role. Every year you reapply, you submit a written application to talk about what you feel are the goals for the upcoming school year, how you would enact those goals, how you will build capacity among other teachers in your, on your team or in your department. And so it's a, it's a great opportunity. Teaching can sometimes, I think, feel like, well, I'm a teacher, and 30 years later, I'm still a teacher, you know, what's my opportunity for, for leadership, or for stepping outside my comfort zone and kind of trying to do something new and different? And these are those opportunities in many ways, among other things that teachers do that are not positional, but they're more voluntary. But these are the positional leadership opportunities that are listed here in this report.
Thank you, Kim. Anybody have any questions on that? No, okay. Next, professional appointments, resignations, retirements.
There are two resignations and one leave of absence in this month's report.
Thank you. And then deeper learning updates.
So I'm not going to go over each of the updates. I just invite the board and community to review the updates from each school, which are aligned to our vision of the global citizen and our instructional model, which Veronica had mentioned, the FTL, which is our framework for teaching and learning, a really student-led, student-centered instructional model that supports deeper learning across all of our schools and classrooms.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the superintendent's report. Item six, unfinished business, budget impact, budget update. Scott?
So a lot of what I'll report on tonight will be acted on later in the agenda or reviewed later in the agenda, so.
Sure.
As I mentioned a few moments ago, in between the last board meeting and tonight, as you know, the, the budget passed, so the referendum passed along, as I mentioned, the Bonin Project. So in the business office, we're pleased to be moving ahead, and also in the process of getting ready to close out this fiscal year and open the next one. Tonight, we'll look at the last one when we do the audit real quick, so we're always in three phases and continuing that. Contract work has, has been going on with our negotiations committee, so tonight we're going to review an amendment to the FEA contract that I've spoken about a few times in front of the board regarding club and activity stipends, which was outlined in the previous contractual agreement with the FEA, so we'll have a chance to look at that. We'll also be reviewing the renewal for Chartwell's. Last year, the board approved a five-year agreement with Chartwell's that will be updated yearly, so it's actually separate one-year contract renewals, so we will look at that. And then we expect the FPS EU contract, we have tentative agreement in place and expect that contract to be ready for review with the board at our June meeting as well. So quite busy with contract work, but look forward to presenting a few tonight and then another hopefully next month. And then hot off the press, the State Department of Education, actually Department of Administrative Services contacted us this morning to notify us that our submission for the HVAC grant was not approved. As you recall, we did apply, may also recall that we were not overly optimistic about that at the time. In fact, in the letter, they detail that in order to receive funding, we require a promise of funding ahead of time, and therefore, you know, we will hope to work with the town manager's office and the town council if and when the next round of HVAC grants become available. And this is something that we discussed both with the council during our capital presentation and with the board during our capital presentation as well. But we did receive that confirmation this morning from DAS, that as the rules are currently written, we would need a local, a promise of local funding, therefore likely a refer, no other way than to have a referendum prior, and then the, the grant application would follow. So we'll keep our eyes posted and, and hope that the state will continue to offer those grant opportunities and/or eventually just roll this into normal school construction projects, and we could follow that procedure, but I did want to share that since we received that notification this morning.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
And I know you must have felt kind of bummed, knowing that you knew, you knew the outcome, but you were still pretty bummed, because you worked really hard on that, so thank you. I know you worked hard on it.
I, I will tell you that I opened the letter still with like, a level of, you know, mystery, so it wasn't, but then it confirmed.
It was a thin letter, like, it wasn't a thick letter, like, you get, when you get accepted to college, you get the thin letter.
It was an email, so. Just clicked on the PDF.
It was only one kilobyte.
Yeah, it was a small file.
It's a small file, right. Okay, item 6B, new course approvals. Kathy?
So Veronica's going to come up, back up. This is a second reading, we went over these at the last meeting, so if there are any questions, please let us know.
I don't have any questions. Anybody? Okay. Now, is there a motion to approve the second reading of the new courses as presented to be implemented in the 2024, 2025 school year?
Motion? Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you, Veronica, great job. All right. Next, item 6C, approval of updated policy 4150, leave of absences, second reading. Can I get a motion to approve the policy updates for policy 4151, leaves of absences for a second reading?
Motion? Second?
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. Item seven, new business, paragraph A, annual audit report, 2223. Scott?
All right, so there are some directions here. The audit report is available on the Town of Farmington website, there should be a hyperlink in your, in your board packet.
There is.
To look at that as well. The, you know, in the past, the auditors would come to the board meeting, now they do a comprehensive audit review, since our audit is combined with the Town of Farmington's audit, they do a comprehensive review, which they already did with the town council, so I'll just take you through the highlights of that discussion. So the 2223 audit was performed by our current auditors, PKF O'Connor-Davies, and you can see we have both the federal audit and the state audit. Page one and two provides you with a letter from our auditors that highlights that we had a clean audit, so there were no deficiencies or material weaknesses noted by our auditors, which is great news. If you scroll to six and seven, you see a report of our federal grants, and then pages 14 and 15 of, of the audit have our state grants, and you can follow that as well. And then on the FPS website, on the Business Services page, under audits, you can see the large Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and this one, if you sift through, does have some of our programs listed in it as well. It's mixed on the same page with, with Town Program, but on pages 107 through 112 of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, you can see information on Excel, Continuing Education, our CAF services, the Farmington Valley Transition Academy, and additional special projects. All of those funds ended with a positive balance in the account.
Simple question, how did we do? Did we pass the audit, Scott?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Any questions for Scott? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 annual audit report as presented?
Motion? Second?
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Next, 7B.
So the Curriculum Committee met on May 6 and reviewed the recommended textbook adoption for the 2425 school year, and Veronica Ruzek is here to answer any questions for this first reading.
So this is a first reading of the two texts, of two textbooks that we propose to be used at the high school level, and both of them are really a replacement of, of books that are pretty out of date, and so sometimes we will just, you know, buy the new version of the book, and sometimes not, sometimes, you know, but either way, oftentimes we'll go through a process of making sure that, you know, the book that we're putting forward is one that's been looked at and considered and looked at different options. And so that's what happened this year, where Social Studies is changing the textbook that they use for the AP course, and they're going to use something called Fabric of a Nation. This was selected because the book is very aligned to the AP assessment at the end of the year, or May, I mean, our students are about to go into that testing window right now, and what it allows our students to do is use this in conjunction with all the resources the AP program now puts out that are like online resources. And so that's what they've selected to do, is an actual textbook. I know, sometimes I get questions about why not use a digital version of the book. The textbook publishers have figured out that, how to charge exactly the same amount for a textbook as what the online program is. And so what this allows us to do is actually buy this textbook and then use the free online resources that come with the AP tests that are more, like, most aligned to the AP tests that the students are going to see, which was part of the College Board's equity focus to provide those kinds of resources more widespread. So our students will use that in conjunction with this textbook. And actually, the same thing for the science textbook, it's an environmental science course. I, I do want to also say the Fabric of a Nation, that impacts about 200 students in the junior year, so a lot of students will be using that textbook. And the environmental science, we're talking about 35 students who select that course in general that will be using that textbook. Again, this is, anyway, so again, they've gone through a rigorous process, and a team of teachers vet these and go through a series of questions to make sure that they're, you know, unbiased kinds of textbooks, look at how, is, are there like, you know, a variety of authors, what's their expertise, that kind of thing. But these are ultimately two books that are highly recommended by the College Board for these courses. This is a first reading, so you're just voting on the first reading today? Oh, and I want to say the textbooks are available in the curriculum office, so we put them out for the public to see the textbooks, so they're in our office.
Okay, I get a motion to approve the first reading of the textbook adoption proposal as presented?
Motion? Second?
Discussion.
They sound great, like, I don't, I'm not suggesting there's anything wrong with them whatsoever. I would just like for my edification for any like textbook or book changes, like, could I see the current syllabus and like the name of the current, you know, text that it's being replaced for, just so that I have an understanding of, to your point, I think you covered that the social studies one is because this one, I'm assuming, aligns more with the capstone than the current one does. But for the environmental science one, is it just a new addition? It's the, this is the fourth edition, are we replacing it from the third edition? Or is this just, we deviated to another, you know, text for whatever reasons? But I think that would just be helpful for me to understand what these are replacing in terms of a comprehensive syllabus. I think for these, if I'm understanding correctly as I'm thinking of them, because they're larger high school classes, there's probably only one textbook in these classes, but maybe I'm wrong, so I would just like to understand what textbooks there are and then what this is replacing, basically.
Aren't they recommended by AP?
They are, so they're recommended by the College Board, so I will say that the social studies Fabric of a Nation, I do know that it is replacing An American Pageant was the book that was used before, and it's probably the version I had when I was in high school, I'm not sure, but sometimes I'll get pictures from Kathy, like, did you know that this is still?
I regularly take pictures.
So anyway.
So I just want to.
Publishing date.
I just want to jump in. Angela, you asked for something that, and this is not, I just want to kind of like a point of order almost, it's kind of, it's never been asked before, which is where a board member is asking a staffer to provide materials. And so that kind of rises to the level of the board's action, because none of us have the ability individually to ask a member of the district to do anything unless we work on it collectively. So if you're asking for something from the Director of Curriculum, I think the board has an opportunity to pass, and whether or not Veronica has to respond to that question. So I'm going to ask the board, I'm going to poll the board. Angela's asked for some specific information, I don't care one way or the other, but I think if we're going to, if we're going to do it, this is the way we have to do it, okay? So I want to, I'm going to just, all those in favor of instructing Veronica to respond to Angela's question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, you said aye?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's.
I think it's okay.
Okay, opposed?
Nay.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, all right, so let's, it was seven, two to seven, I think, I counted it right?
Yep, there's nine of us.
Okay, so you don't, with respect, she doesn't have to respond to that. Now, the books are in the office, you can go look at the office and all that stuff, but I think it's important that we all remember that none of us here individually has the authority, including myself, to direct anyone that works in the district to do anything for us, unless we all decide we want to do it together. So that's, that's why I want to bring that up. Okay. Any other questions, anyone?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay.
Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. All right. Next is increasing educator diversity plan approval, item 7C.
So Assistant Superintendent Kim will review our plan for increasing educator diversity tonight, and, and this is in response to a legislative mandate, Public Act 23-167, section 10. It was implemented July 1, 2023, so all districts created their plans using a template. So it's, it's a different template that you've ever seen, because we, it's part of a state template that we have to utilize, and this is about recruitment, hiring, and retention. I will say that we are required to get approval from the board, we submit it, the state may give us feedback, and we would have to make some adjustments to it, but that is the process. It's not our process, it's the state's process. I do want to just take a moment to commend Kim. Over the years, we have prioritized diversifying our faculty and staff here in Farmington to align to our equity framework and our core belief equity matters. So this has been a priority for us for many years. This just happens to now be a legislative mandate, but I don't want anyone to think that we're starting this work today. This is something we've worked on for a very long time, and Kim has led, and it's something that's, you know, very important to us, and so I just wanted to say that. But this is a new legislative mandate for all school districts in Connecticut.
I just want to add that you've been doing this before, the state of Connecticut has been put, you know, this is a classic example of a mandate that doesn't apply to the Town of Farmington, because we're ahead of the curve. But it is what it is. So I need a motion to approve the first reading, oh, that's not it. Next slide, please. Motion to, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the increasing diversity plan as presented.
Motion, second.
All those in favor signify by, I'm sorry, strike, any, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Okay, next up, the Noah Wallace Fund.
Yeah, so Kim will provide an overview of the Noah Wallace Fund projects for next year.
So I have the great pleasure of meeting with the Noah Wallace Fund Committee once a year to review the proposals submitted by teachers, teacher leaders, collaborative groups of teachers. This year, we were thrilled to have quite a number of proposals that we could consider, and because the Noah Wallace Fund financials were in healthy shape, let's say, it was, it was wonderful to be able to bring to your consideration this full list of proposals that came to us. We welcomed Marty for the first time to our, our meeting, and I think he really enjoyed hearing about these proposals. They, they range in focus and in, in, you know, what, what they're bringing to students, from special education task boxes to STEM, to ways in which West Woods School can reflect a more welcoming-to-all community through posters and messaging and signage and so forth. So I won't go through them one by one unless you have any questions about them, but we bring forward this slate of proposals for your approval, and the total is $25,800.
Thank you. Any members of the board participate in that, on Noah Wallace Committee?
I was not able to join, but I have to say the description of these programs that were suggested are fantastic and definitely.
Awesome, such a gift to our committee. Really is an amazing gift to our committee. It really is.
It's so amazing to have this opportunity.
Right.
Also, I love the diversity of it.
Sure, go ahead.
I just had a question, I mean, I don't know too much about Noah Wallace Committee, so just general question. I assumed obviously hearing it, it dealt with Noah Wallace, but then reading these, it's like, all over.
I was going to ask the same question.
Is that, can someone just give me a little background on, on that, just so I understand it?
I, I wish I could, I should know all of this by heart, but I, it's an endowment fund that's been around for 50, 60 years. The person who left the funds was a Noah Wallace parent, and wanted the funds to benefit students in District One. In general, we don't like to prioritize any particular one school or set of skills, so most often, as long as the students of District One benefit, the funds can be applied to all elementary schools, for example. And so, you know, it doesn't set us up for any kind of inequity, and at times, we have thought about the funds sort of in, like seed money, to get something started. So for example, a number of years ago, Noah Wallace, the Noah Wallace Fund started the Makerspace at Noah Wallace School, and then the board, in the coming years, decided that that was such an amazing experience for students, that through the operating budget, we funded Makerspaces in all of our elementary schools. So sometimes it works like that, like seed money, sometimes the, like at West Woods, we're certainly benefiting all, you know, students in Farmington.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I have a slide, Scott, for the motion, please? Can I get a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 Noah Wallace Fund projects as presented for a total of $25,800?
Motion, second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. All right, next, new business, item 7E, policy updates, first reading, action anticipated.
So the policy committee met on May 6th, and Shipman and Goodwin had revised the following 1,000, 2,000, and 4,000 series policies to ensure that we were up to date with current statutory requirements, any case law, and the current practice of the district. The 5,000 and 6,000 updates were updated by Veronica and Kim, with Shipman and Goodwin's guidance to reflect statutory requirements and our current practice within the school district.
Can you talk a little bit about the homework policy being changed or updated?
Sure, Kim can talk about that. We, we, over the years, you know, have shifted to a mastery-based system, and we had made some updates, as I remember, but I, I just want, I think that was one of the things, after a few years, let's look at this, and Shipman felt like we needed to make sure it was reflective of current practice. And when we put policies together, they not only help our parents and families know what the expectations are for homework, but also our faculty and staff as well.
I think that, in that particular policy, I don't have it in front of me, but it was cleaning up some of the language to describe why we give homework, the purposes of homework, but it didn't change homework expectations in terms of suggestions for the amount of homework that students would get by grade level. It also made clear that we think about independent reading as something that's above and beyond homework, and something we, we want our students to be doing every night. I, I think it was really more about just eliminating language that was a little bit overly general or confusing, and making it clear the, the purposes for homework in, in today's K-12 environment.
I just want to, I just wanted to ask that question more, because that is a common area where people are going to have questions about, I just want to make sure that there was a public record of a discussion on that. And I would also want to add that, well, there's a homework policy, there's an administrative regulation that actually governs the specific allocation of how homework is to be, is recommended by the district. Any other questions, comments? Angela?
There's a few on a few different policies. On policy 1120, it deals with the Board of Ed meetings, actually, and there's a large portion of it that's being struck out. I was just wondering if that was similar to my request last meeting, just understanding if this is a duplication somewhere, and it's being.
Oh, yeah.
So that was, why would that, that portion?
Yeah, it's a duplication of 9120 and 9, I'm sorry, 9320 and 9321, so that it's duplication. And again, you know, whenever we have policies that are, you know, duplicating other ones, it could be that we update one and not the other. So because it was a duplicate of two others, they, Shipman suggested to take that part out.
Okay, and then policy 1411 on school resource officers, there's, again, just a large portion of it just kind of being eliminated there.
Yes, so we now have an MOU that's on our website, so it really, this just points to the fact that by statute, we need to have an MOU with our, with our police department. That's updated annually, so it wouldn't make sense to have all of this in a policy, but we want to identify that we have an MOU with our police department, and that we put it online, anyone can view it. And, you know, I'll give a good example, we have had an MOU with our police department for a very long time, and then the statute came. It's very similar to what we just approved. We've had it because our police department gets accredited, and that's one of the requirements, is that you have a clear understanding of what the SRO's role is, and what administrators' roles are, because they're not the same, they're very different. And so our MOU, which is online, outlines all of that. And a good example of updating it is now we have a comfort dog. Well, we added a comfort dog, and so we had to update our MOU to, to really spell out how the comfort dog is going to be in our schools, and what the role of a comfort dog is. So anyone who wants to have, you know, real specifics about that can go right online, but it wouldn't be appropriate to outline that relationship that gets updated pretty regularly in a policy. So that's why it's all taken out, but you can find it very, very detailed in our MOU.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Phil asked my question about the homework ready, 6146.2, which deals with testing. Seems like we're taking a large portion out on classroom testing, test reporting, diagnostic testing, is that covered somewhere else? Are we eliminating testing, or?
I think that it did not reflect current practice, and so we, it was spelling out testing that may or may not actually be happening, because we are very responsive and change the ways in which we're testing students. So the, the required mandated testing is important to spell out there, but in general, you know, we now have DIBELS testing, which we didn't have two years ago, and we may, you know, I think the volatility of some of the testing is something we wanted to be careful about. I don't know, Veronica, if there's anything else that you would?
I think it was one of the ones, remember last time we met, Kathy kind of said like, these are some of the ones that just aren't required, and it's not laid out, are laid out already in law. And so this is actually not even a required policy at all, but we didn't want to really get rid of the policy in totality, so we just spelled out the things that are sort of like the, the most important kinds of testing, if you have an understanding of what those are, but this is not a required policy anyway. But it's hard to get rid of a policy that, like, it's just testing, and so we just made it more streamlined, so that it would still exist, and point out the most important kinds of things on the testing, but it's not a required policy.
Okay, so we're still testing in Farmington?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, no, I don't.
Is that a serious question?
Yeah.
It's required by law.
Yeah.
It's not a required policy, and I think, I, my understanding, because Kim and Veronica were asked to review the 5,000 and 6,000 policies, because Shipman really, they can do some things for us, but it's about our context and how we implement homework, how we implement grading, how we implement testing. And the corporate testing really doesn't reflect our testing of children, it's the state's requirement to the federal government to test every child, you know, in third through eighth, and then 11th grade. And, and so that was my understanding, that it was something that, it's a requirement at the state and federal level, and we do implement it, we have to implement it, but it's not our testing.
Okay, so, and then it talks about the results and stuff, so we would still have access to the results of testing and all of that, it's just.
Yes.
More verbiage from what you're saying.
Right.
Okay, and then the last one was 6146A, I just didn't know if, I didn't see what the change was, maybe I missed it, so this could be I've missed it before, but I didn't see like a, a change here. Is, is there something changing or added, maybe, that's not highlighted? I just didn't know anything that was different.
You got it, it's there.
It's the regulation.
It's blue, it's in blue ink.
On 6146A, what page?
That's the regulation, I think, right?
Yeah, it's the regulation for the testing.
The testing one?
No.
Graduation requirement.
The graduation.
Oh, the graduation.
The graduation, I'm sorry, 6146A, yeah, the last one. It, it just, it's on, I'm sorry, it's on the agenda, page 153. It just states the graduation requirements, and I wasn't sure.
Well, one thing I can say is that it used to have in our policy graduation requirements for the classes prior to 2023. And we decided we no longer need that, and those classes have graduated. So we didn't need their requirements. So it may be that what you're seeing there is that all of that went away, because it doesn't make sense to have it there anymore, but what's left is accurate.
Okay, so there's no real changes?
Right.
It was just that something that's not, that happened in the past is not there anymore?
Well, there's, there is.
And I just want to point out that that's the regulation, so in the requirements, you'd see what the changes are, that's what I think Bill was referring to.
Right.
And there you can see it in the blue color, the things that were added, so for example, the FAFSA thing, it is a requirement now.
Yes, that's a new requirement.
And that's taken from the model policy and added to ours. And then the other one that you might notice is the change to the personal finance course, which will become a requirement the following year, but as you can see, sometimes those, sometimes those policies are just, they're, they're good for a couple of years, and then those years graduate, and you don't need them anymore, so that's really the work that was done on this one, to take out all the old kind of language.
Okay, so the changes on 6146, and then 6146A, which deals with the regulation, actually?
Yeah, it's testing, yes.
That's followed, was pointed out, as having been changed in the policy.
Okay, great, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I do. On that policy 6146, with the graduation requirements, how does it work when, so the credit is defined as, you know, not less than the equivalent of one 40-minute class period for each school day of the school year, 180 days, when our classes don't run 40 minutes? How does that work?
That's why they do the equivalent of, the equivalent of, but they also added that language, you can see there, of, or, or mastery-based, or, you know, other ways. So they still, Shipman still recommended that we use sort of that equivalent of language, but then also you can see there's other ways to earn credits other than seat time.
Okay.
That's what was added to, so that you can see that in the policy.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Get a motion to approve the policy updates listed below for the first reading.
Motion, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Can I get a motion to extend our meeting past 10 o'clock, please?
Motion, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's not 10 yet.
It's no chance, no chance. You still have executive, still got executive session. All right, next item, 7F, policy repeals, first reading. Kathy?
Yes, so like I did the last time, I did a quick little chart, just so everyone can take a look. So most of them are just not required, well, not required, recommended for appeal, the first two. And then on the certification one, the 4112.2, it's not required, recommended for repeal, and it's out of date. There's a, if you've read any articles lately, there's a huge shift in certification, and really, that goes by the law, and very similar to what we just talked about, so we, we don't want to put ourselves in a place that doesn't align to the law. The interscholastic intramural athletics, not required, recommended for repeal, it's out of date as well. 6141321, and the regulation technology instruction, it's not required, recommended for appeal, it's redundant with student and employee use of computer systems in the 4,000 and 5,000 series. And then 6150, not required, recommended for appeal, and it's out of date as well.
Questions?
Um, thank you for this, I think this is very helpful, I appreciate that. Um, thank you for this, I think this is very helpful, I appreciate that. For policy 6123, while reading it, obviously familiarizing myself through the agenda, this policy seems like it was in place for us to be in compliance with Title IX.
Right.
So what are we, how are we in compliance with that if we repeal it?
Well, it's, it's a federal law. So this actually talked about only addressing it when the boys athletics outnumbered the girls athletic opportunities. But it's both, it's not just one. If the girls opportunities were higher than the boys opportu, we would have to. So it's, it's actually inaccurate and so, and it's very old. So we do follow Title IX, we're required to follow Title IX in our athletics and this policy isn't required.
So it was decided that it would be beneficial to just repeal it as opposed to your point. I mean, that makes sense, what you said. Why not update it to include the, you know, to include the reverse verbiage? Like just eliminating it, what's the benefit of it?
Well, I guess it's, it's very similar to others, you know, the law changes, things shift. We want to make sure that we don't have old policies like this. So if it's not required that we have the policy, but we follow the law as it's written, which we do, and review that regularly internally, because that's something that's important to us, that we have that equity within our athletic programming. And we regularly meet with shipment and Goodwin about those issues. It's just not something, you know, they, this policy is not required. We recommend, they recommended repeal. And it had that, you know, identifying imbalance in one, but not the other. So that's why, we just want to make sure we're following the current law and that shifts it times. So we don't want to have that in a policy. Shipment doesn't have a model policy related to this. So as those things would happen, we would not be updating it. And we want to stay in compliance at all times.
This is just an example in my mind of where we have policies that, that were enacted at a time when the law was a little less clear, a little less, yeah, a little less clear. And now we have substantial law, both federal and state, that governs our, our activity, our, our conduct in operating the school district. The policy at this point, as you can see, was adopted in 2002 and predicated upon a statute that dated in 1973 in Connecticut Public Act 97-290. So this is an old, old policy that has real no, it doesn't mean anything because we're, we're still following the law. The policy just exists in the book. But it doesn't mean anything because if we don't follow the law, we're in trouble. So, any further discussion?
And then my, just on policy 1100 with the communication with the public, I know it's saying recommended for repeal, not required. I mean, obviously we still communicate with the public. So this is just another one where it's, I mean, it's not specifically covered in somewhere else, but you just don't feel it's needed basically. Like we'll obviously continue to communicate with the public.
Okay.
Yeah.
It, it was very simple, the policy from what was given to us. It's not required and they recommended repeal. I know we have other places where we talk about communication with the public. We talk about, you know, how the public, another one here, how we should respond to the public, that we send the public first to teachers and then to the principal and it kind of moves up. And this just see, from what they saw was not required, not, they recommended repeal, but also we have other policies that cover this, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I have a motion after identifying the below policies which are unnecessary and redundant. The board approves and appeals of these policies at first reading and moves them forward for a second reading.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. All right, item 7G, does all the elementary ad hoc committee need a motion to dissolve the elementary ad hoc committee effective immediately?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion?
So this is 9133, board policy that, you know, you establish and dissolve ad hoc committees. And they're, and it has to be by a vote of the board. So I just want to, just as Scott did and all of you had said, I just want to extend our appreciation to the ad hoc committee members who are listed, you know, on the cover sheet, who really, you know, did, did a superb job. And, you know, not an easy job, it was very complex. And you can see how that played out in the presentation today. But we really thank them for their service and dedication to this ad hoc committee.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. All right, next up is the cafeteria contract renewal. Scott?
Thanks, Bill. So as I shared earlier in the budget impact budget update, we are in the process of yearly now approving an updated amendment. So this is our first amendment because we just adopted the contract last year. So this would be amendment one that we're voting on today. So this process, Andrea, remember this process? We did it two years in a row with, with bringing on a new vendor. And so it's heavily, heavily prescribed by the State Department of Education when you bring on a food service management company. And so these directions and guidelines come down from CSDE. So we await, basically they, they may have updates. They also, they also don't allow a food service management company to charge an increase beyond what they've calculated at CPI at the time. So the increase for Chartwell's could not be beyond 4.6%. That's the highest increase that any public school district who is contracted with a food service management company could pass on. We're not close to that in our contract. And, and quite honestly, there is a, you know, a dialogue between the food service management company and myself and I speak to Andrea around where we are and, 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 you know, what is reasonable. And so in this, in this pending approval here, Chartwell's management fee, which is the lesser of the two fees, would remain flat. And so this, I think, would be the third year in a row that, that the management fee remains flat. And we ended up on a negotiated increase for their administrative fees, which is really what, what they get paid for in, in terms of managing our, our CAF services district wide, would be a two and a half percent increase. And again, the maximum increase that they could receive for either would have been 4.6%. And so that results in, you know, a slight increase, $3,000 and change from last year or from this current year to next year. Are there any questions on the food service management contract?
Andrea, you good with this?
Go.
Completely. Okay, I get a motion to approve amendment number one dated May 13th, 2024, as presented. Amendment number one sets the management and administrative fees for the 2024, 2025 school year. The original contract stipulated that both fees would increase by the greater of the increase in the employee, employment cost index or the consumer price index. In management fees, there will be a 0% increase and in administrative fees, there will be a 2.5% increase.
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to move up item 8A and make it 7I.
Motion?
Moving up the financial report before executive session.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, okay, Scott?
I've got to reorganize my papers over here.
Sorry, buddy.
I'm ready.
Listen, I can remove everything up and then I can be done while you guys go into executive session, but I'm going to stay.
We'll try to move expeditiously through this and the other items as well, Bill.
So I have the March financials for your review. Hate to sound like a broken record, but our trend continues to really play out. You know, so you'll see that we have, just as an explanation in terms of the salaries line for teachers, as I mentioned previously, we have more leaves than, than ever before. And so encumber, encumbrances are held, right? So when a teacher, we don't know that the, that an issue is going to arise. Therefore, we're projected for the entire year to spend a certain amount on, on, on a teacher. And over time, a leave happens and then they're supposed to return. If they don't return, then we have to, eventually over time, as, as those issues play out, we end up releasing more and more money back to the budget. And we did that a little bit further with, with our teacher line between, in the month of March as well. In additionally, in addition, for our paraprofessional expenditures, known as aides, although moving forward next year, we'd like to propose changing that. But as, that's an outdated term. We did talk to our auditors and they approved that change following this fiscal year. We, we did bring some more money back onto the IDEA grant to carry over into next year. So we're going to continue to work on that. We want to make sure that we, based on how the budget is looking for next year, we want to make sure that we have enough money and we carry over more grant expenditures based on this year. So those are a couple of shifts. Again, you'll see that we continue to be over budget in areas, including but not limited to transportation, tuition and custodial supplies. And then if you look on the explanation and account status page, which would be your third page, you can see where we're applying projected revenue moving forward. And then insurance has been, we actually met with Cigna today. And, you know, we're continuing the trend in a positive direction and the last couple of months have, have proven to be so.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the financial, March financial report as presented?
Next slide.
Motion?
I think I got it.
Wasn't ready for that change, hold on.
I think I said it just like that.
You did.
Just like that.
Can I get, can I get a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. All right, now we're going to go into executive session. Well, the next item up is the cafeteria, is the.
Oh, could I just ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Did we do all the motions for the cafeteria? I, I, there were more, right?
That's the motion.
We did that, did we do those?
I didn't read those.
Go through that.
Oh, no. That sucks, but that's.
This is, this is the expla, this is the explanation in the report.
Oh, it's just the explanation, okay. I got nervous that maybe we had to do that as well. Okay, thank you.
All right, so the next item up on the agenda is the discussion of the amendment of appendix C, the FEA contract, with the anticipation of going into executive session. Can I get a motion to go, well, before we go into executive session, I'm going to recuse myself from this, I'll step out. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 You're in executive session. Okay, we're out, we're out of executive session. Then I'll leave it, I'll turn it over to you, Andrea.
Actually, I got a motion of return, right?
Do, do we need a motion first to return?
You don't need a motion in executive session, right?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, I'll leave it, go ahead.
All right, can I have a motion to leave executive session at 10:27 and return to public session at 10:28?
Motion? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries? Sorry.
Yeah, I can't.
I, I know. I move to approve the amendment of appendix C of the collective bargaining agreement with the Farmington Education Association for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, as presented by the administration. And further move that the board authorize its negotiation chair to execute, execute the amendment on behalf of the board. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstained.
Bill abstains? Okay, motion carries.
Okay.
Is that the right timing, Scott?
Yeah.
Yeah.
2025.
Got to redo it.
Yeah. All right, I move to approve the amendment of appendix C of the collective bargaining agreement with the Farmington Education Association for the period July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2025, as presented by the administration.
Just have to ask. Is it 2024, 2025? I don't have the. 22, 23, 23, 24, yeah, I think it's 22. Back to 22? One doesn't. Yeah, because it's next, last year, right? He said they have.
It's 2026.
2026.
Sorry about that. Right, because this is the first year of the contract, 23, 24. Then 24, 25 is the second and then 25, 26 is the third.
Okay, three's a charm.
Yeah.
I move to approve the amendment of appendix C of the collective bargaining agreement with the Farmington Education Association for the period July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026, as presented by the administration and further move that the board authorize its negotiation chair to execute the amendment on behalf of the board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Andrea, wait, I just have a discussion quickly. Is that the right date though, guys? Because didn't we just talk about how the first year was last year? And then it was two more years after that? So wouldn't the first year have been 2022 to 2023? And then 23 to 24, 24 to 25 was the last two?
You negotiate, you negotiate a year before the contract goes into effect.
Okay.
So we are actually in, we're in the end of, this will end the first year of the three-year agreement. So 23, 24 would be the first year of this agreement. 24, 25, which is next school year, would be year two. Then 25, 26 would be year three, which we will negotiate a year in advance for the next contract.
All right.
Thanks for, thanks for the question. And apologies for the confusion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstention.
Bill abstains, motion carries.
All right, next item on the agenda, report of the board chair. I participated in the awarding the Alma Bailey Taylor Scholarship Trust scholarships. For those of you who don't know, Alma Bailey Taylor left the school district a substantial amount of money, which is used and then given out as scholarship awards. There's like over 20 some odd applicants who gave out scholarships to 13 deserving Farmington High seniors. I served on that committee with Chris Hoeb, CJ and Thomas and Joe Capitafaro. We have a meeting, well, don't call me. Our, our school tour is on Wednesday at 5 o'clock. Kathy, where should we meet?
We are going to meet in the trailer.
Okay.
That's where, and it will be, it'll be interesting to all be in the trailer. That's several different groups. But we basically, you know, the building committee, then the town council, then you call to order.
Right.
Then we go in and do the tour.
So it's exciting, hopefully you can make it.
Excuse me, Bill?
Yeah.
Just as a reminder for that, if, we'll have the PPE, we'll have the glasses. You can wear eyeglasses or sunglasses. We'll have the vests, the hats. Please wear, you know, footwear.
Super shoes.
I, I did have to, I've been up to the site three times, so I had to wash my shoes. I keep forgetting to wear boots. But just wear closed-toed shoes, please. And it is a little muddy on, on a part of the walk-in, so just a reminder on that. Thanks, sorry, Bill.
Yeah, no worries, okay. That's, and again, our next meeting is June 3rd.
3rd.
3rd, and I think that's our last meeting of the year, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then IAR graduation is June 6th and FHS is June 7th. So we're just about coming to the end. All right, that's all I have. Report of committee, report of committee chairs, personnel negotiations.
I think we've been updated. We just did everything. But I did, I just wanted to take a moment to just acknowledge James and Nadine, who, because we've done a lot of work this year. I've been on negotiations since 2018. work this year. I've been on negotiations since 2018. And I have to say, you know, James, you hit the ground running on day two. You know, same with Nadine, her first go around with negotiations, being on the committee. It's been a lot of work. And I just, I'm thankful to have both of you on the committee. So.
It's been a little bit of fun.
Awesome.
For sure.
Beth, policy. I know you just did a bunch of, a bunch of work, so.
Yeah, we met last Monday and that's what we brought forward tonight. And no next meeting set yet, but we're regularly meeting to clean up those policies.
Curriculum, Andrea?
Nothing to report. I think Veronica presented everything that we reviewed in our last meeting last week.
And then communications, Beth?
We're meeting on May 29th at 4:30 in the Board of Ed conference room in Town Hall. And we'll discuss content ideas for the summer newsletter.
Great. Report of committee liaisons, Crick, no report. Extended learning opportunities, Sylvie?
No report.
Superintendent Scholastic Advisory?
We have a meeting June 4th.
Farmington Public School Foundation, James?
Nothing new to report.
Health and wellness, including focus, Angela?
We have a meeting May 20th.
Awesome, okay. Cafeteria Advisory, Nadine?
Nothing new to report.
Town BOE Green Efforts Committee, Martin?
We met last Tuesday and we went over a total trash haul. It was 4,700 pounds. And there was 14 prizes donated by local vendors or businesses
Awesome.
that were given out to the heavy haul in competition.
Cool. Community Council for Equity Inclusion, Erica?
Nothing. You were meeting this Wednesday, right after the tour.
FHS Building Committee, we'll see you on Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday. And just a reminder to members of the board and public that the FHS campus is going to be closed down for all the activity, June 12th, so.
June 12th?
As of June 12th.
No Wals fund? We just had our report. All right. And then this will be my last elementary ad hoc report. I think you saw, we saw it tonight. So they can remove that from the agenda.
Yes.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, extension, motion carries.